I'd like to call a special study session for October 11th to order. And would the clerk please call a roll?
Yes. Mayor Frank Hansen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Terry Anderson.
Here.
Council members Gene Fisher.
Here.
Chris White is on his way. Ralph Shape.
Here.
You know your mic's not on? Oh, it is. Well, we can't hear you.
Okay. Where was I? Ralph Shape.
Here.
We said that. Joe Brennan.
Here.
And Don DeHan.
Here.
Counsel, almost complete.
Okay. The special study session will now be adjourned into an executive session, which is for the purpose of potential litigation. And we will reconvene the regular study session at 5:00.
I remember the farms. And now I live in Renton, and I actually lived there before the business parks popped up. So I figured, I better paint and record this before there's no more farms. And that was my method. Artists record things. They have memories. They express themselves. And those stay in your heart and your mind, the beauty of what you see. And I will always see that. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate this kind of presentation for artists. Thank you.
Our next winner is Joan Treat, and her painting is Pigtails.
Well, for someone that doesn't talk much, he talked a lot. And I have a lot fewer words.
Much closer to the microphone.
Oh, okay. I have fewer words. I paint more, talk even less. But the painting of mine, my husband and I were in the Bahamas a few years ago, and I use him as a decoy to take quick snapshots of people. Because if they see you with a camera, they either look away or they get uncomfortable. So I just line it up to him, having to stand as close as possible to them innocently, and I go, "Quick!" And before they know it, they're on film. And then when I got home, I was able to do a painting of it. And that's all. It's oil, I think. I can't remember if I painted that in oil or acrylic, to tell you the truth, because I use both mediums. But it was fun to do, and I'm very honored to be here with it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
And our final winner is Nola Tressler with two paintings, Serene Life I and Ten Rupees.
Thank you so much. I'm just overwhelmed. This makes five of mine that you have in your collection.
We must like you.
Well, I do many different styles, and you must like them all, because you've...
Which one is yours back there?
The very last one with, it's the sumi fish print, and then the middle one, the hanging one. And this is a new medium that I have created in the last two years, which I call zen art. And it's where I paint backwards from behind the plexiglass. And I use handmade, hand-stained, and found papers along with paint. But everything has to be backwards, since you're doing it from behind. And I do it on plexiglass, and I do it on glass. These two pieces happen to be plexiglass.
You're not dyslexic, are you?
You know, I think I might be. That's why it came easy. But thank you so much. This is a really wonderful venue for artists, and I know that we appreciate it. I do. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.[298.25][298.25](applause) Terry, maybe we could give those to Marlon to distribute, huh?
Uh-huh.
Charlie Melkwar.
We're going, are those the volunteers?
I believe so, yeah.
They'll be given to them at special dinner.
Oh, so we don't give them...
So we won't be doing that tonight?
No, this is not the art.
Oh, okay. This isn't the art presentation. This is for our volunteers.
No.
So we will present these during our volunteer appreciation dinner. Thank you, Marlon. And thank all the artists who participated. This is wonderful. On the third floor, they have more exhibit of it, so it's really worthwhile to walk through the first and the third floor and see the great work these artists have done. Okay. Our next presentation is from the Burr R S S T. It's Burian, Renton, Skyway, Sea-Tac, and Tuck Willa for Prosperity. 10 minutes, and that's by Mr. Tom Carlson, the executive director. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Hansen, and Deputy Mayor Anderson, and council members. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I am Tom Carlson. I'm the executive director of Burst for Prosperity, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to introduce you to Burst and describe Burst a bit for you this evening. Burst is a new long-term initiative to strengthen communities and generate prosperity for all residents of Burian, Renton, Sea-Tac, Skyway, and Tuck Willa. You may know of Burst as formerly the Central South King County Venture, which was funded and started by the Northwest Area Foundation in St. Paul, Minnesota. Burst has been in the making for several years. In 2001, the Burst communities were identified by the Northwest Area Foundation as a prime site of a new and challenging trend. Communities in transition, experiencing an influx of a diverse array of new residents, including immigrants, refugees, and many traditionally disenfranchised groups who are trying to get an economic foothold on the path to prosperity. And generally, a shift of economic insecurity from the central city to the south cities ringing around Seattle. In 2002, 2003, Burst's early organizers reached deep into these communities and brought together a diverse array of literally hundreds of people from communities, a diverse array of communities affected by poverty, along with a rich network of partner institutions, city entities, and businesses. And they brought them together for a deep planning process, an inclusive strategic planning process, to develop a strategy to build prosperity for those who are affected by poverty. That process included more than 500 people at certain points, and it was conducted in more than 10 languages. In 2005, Burst has now launched, based on a strategic plan, and is now taking action on its strategic plan for building prosperity for all residents. That strategy is community-developed and driven. It's asset-based. What do I mean by that? It's built on the strength of communities rather than on their needs, what assets the community have to develop with. And it's focused on the deep-rooted change that's needed to bring about a new prosperity and well-being for all. The strategy and our strategic plan is fourfold. It starts with improving family stability, enhancing economic opportunity, investing in children and youth, and building strong communities. I'm going to walk through each of these strategies in a little more detail. First, family stability. This is the first step on the journey to prosperity, for families to be able to stabilize their lives and to get better access, improved access to basic necessities, such as food, energy, shelter, health care, and legal assistance. We have an action team focused around this first strategy, which is working on better integrating community services throughout the Burst communities and building people-to-people connections, so people can access and know about these services and become better consumers and be able to stabilize their family lives to get on that first step on the pathway to prosperity. Second, we have an action team two focused on enhancing economic opportunity. And they're focusing on connecting residents to trading opportunities for living-wage jobs. Action Team Two actually has an active partnership going with Airport Jobs, which is an innovative program connecting residents to jobs with the more than 100 employers at Sea-Tac Airport, and is also funded Airport University, which provides training for those living-wage jobs. Second, starting and expanding businesses. Action Team Two has just launched a microloan fund to provide alternative financing for residents who want to start and expand their businesses, small microloans of up to $5,000, which was founded in partnership with the Arch Diocese of Olympia of the Episcopal Church. Thirdly, building family assets. Burst has supported and done outreach for the very successful earned income tax credit program in two sites, in Burian and Renton, that last year in 2005 put more than $700,000 into the pockets of poor people. And finally, certifying foreign-trained professionals, those people who are trained in professions such as doctors, teachers, and nurses in other countries, so that they can use their skills in our communities and contribute. Third strategy around Action Team Three is investing in children and youth, so to break the cycle of poverty early and to help ensure success in childhood. And Action Team Three is focusing on two key aspects of investing in children and youth. One is early childhood development and school readiness, and improving ties with public schools. And the second is out-of-school experiences for youth, such as tutoring recreational programs. Action Team Three is focused on strengthening existing community initiatives in these areas and basically increasing and improving culturally competent programs for youth. Finally, and most importantly, building strong communities. Action Team Four is focused on deploying a set of community advocates. These are people who represent and leaders and have respect within their various geographic and ethnic communities, to go out and develop and train new community leaders and to nurture community-based organizations, so that the various communities can increase their capacity to address community concerns and collaborate with institutions throughout the community and make connections within and among the diverse communities that comprise the Burst area. So we invite the city of Sea-Tac to join hands with Burst in pursuing our long-term vision of a community that welcomes, values, and cares for each other and encourages connection, participation, and involvement, so that all community members may live well. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions? And Tom, you, I'm sure, know Kathy Black, our human service coordinator, and you'll be in touch with her and working with her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Here, Frank. Public comment.
Oh, thank you. I overlooked something, didn't I? I skipped over the public comments, and I see that we have Mr. Roger McCracken from Master Park. Roger, would you care to comment at this time?
Roger McCracken, my address is 19600 International Boulevard, Suite 102. And I wanted to just chat a moment about the ILA. I know how difficult that decision and how you folks agonized over that decision or the decision you're about to be making. And I wanted to, I thought there would be more people here from the parking industry, but from Master Park, I would like to thank you for listening to us. And I appreciate, especially through the efforts of Craig, he did listen to us. And what I saw as a result of his listening, we made some headroad and made some movement in a fair tax. So I wanted to thank Craig for that effort as well. He interpreted what we were saying, passed it on to you, and I appreciate that. And the most important thing is that you did listen to our concerns, and you drafted a document the way I see the document has come out, that is fair in the distribution and especially the collection of the tax over the years. So I appreciate all your efforts on that, and thank you very much. What I wanted to do before a final decision was made was offer you an opportunity to ask any questions of me. I represent about 35% of the parking community, and if I can enlighten any outstanding issue, I'd be happy to answer questions to that degree.
Well, normally, in the public comment session, we don't do question and answer, Roger. In fact, I think you explained it pretty well, and we are certainly appreciative of your remarks, because you're aware that we have agonized, spent an awful lot of time for the last year on this, trying to arrive at a fair and equitable solution for everybody. And I really personally appreciate your comments tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
And going on to item two here, a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Port of Seattle. Craig Ward, our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to keep my comments fairly briefly. The document that we sent out went out on last Friday with the council packets. I think it largely speaks for itself. I realize that it's a complicated relationship that we have with the port, and the document itself reflects that reality, because it deals with a lot of...
Thank you. It deals with a lot of technical issues in many respects, that we've sought over the last year to brief the council on, particularly in council committees. And the record shows that we've briefed the council on this, and those meetings are open to the public and have been available, and we've received some public questions and comments in those meetings. We've been to 10 different council committee meetings in the last several months on this.
You keep track, huh?
We do keep track. And we're proud, and I think all of the staff feels that we've created a document here and negotiated it...
You're done.
Successfully.
You may continue.
Thank you. With the Port of Seattle, and I am quite confident that this document, in fact, will receive the endorsement of the Port Commission, which is scheduled for two weeks from today. Briefly, let me mention some of the items for the record here and for the members of the public who may not have a sense of some of the aspects of this document that we feel are important. This will extend the agreement that we have with the port for another 10 years. We've established a much more cooperative relationship with the port, from the '97 ILA till now. And this document, in many respects, reflects the fact that city and port staff have learned to trust each other more effectively. Having said that, we've also learned that there's value in how our relationship is defined in a document and describing that relationship as thoroughly as possible. And we feel that this document has moved much forward from the '97 ILA in explaining how we will administer it on a day-to-day basis. But it will extend for a period of 10 years to the mutual benefit of both parties. We will share our legislative agenda, something that we have never done. And what we're speaking of there is really the fact that both the city of Sea-Tac and the Port of Seattle go to the legislature annually and request changes to state law. That obviously, we're proposing things that are to the benefit of the city of Sea-Tac. The port can also propose things. What we have never done is share that information in advance. And we feel that it's an important step forward to be able to do that, because it would be really nice to work out our disagreements in advance of our legislative strategy, so that our legislators don't necessarily have to do that. This doesn't require that we have the same agendas. It just gives us the opportunity to chat about what each is proposing in advance. This document anticipates the release of the airport's new comprehensive development plan. That is an important aspect of this, because the old ILA, the '97 ILA, addressed the issues of the airport master plan at that time. The comprehensive development plan, that we understand the draft is about to be published, is a document, then, that will define how the port will grow over the next 10 years.
And we have feeling quite a bit of attention to this document, to the aspects of that draft comprehensive development plan that we think are most important to the city of Sea-Tac, and preserve for ourselves the right to continue to negotiate how that document will impact the city, so that we can maximize the benefits of airport growth, both for the citizens as well as for the businesses of the city.
This document no longer presumes that expansions of the airport in their comprehensive development plan are necessarily subject to state law as it pertains to essential public facilities. That's an important element, because in the '97 ILA, we noted that everything in the airport master plan was presumed to be part of an essential public facility. That actually constrained our ability to negotiate some points, and the port has agreed that for all of the items listed in Attachment A II, the list of land uses that pertain to the airport, that they will not exercise the right to argue that those projects are essential public facilities. In some cases, that gives us the right to say no. Because in some cases, and I won't go into the details here, the land uses that can be proposed will require a change to our comprehensive plan or our zoning map. And by preserving the right to say no to those proposed changes, we give ourselves a lot more power to negotiate with the port how those changes will affect us. So it's very important, and I think a significant advancement of this document, that we've resolved that question.
And in addition, the next item I'll mention is that the city now has regained the right in this document to say no to changes to our comprehensive plan and zoning map, in which the land uses...
Your mic went off. Your bike is not working for some reason.
You have to bang it.
My guess is it all got on the mic, or on the record, that we've preserved the right when the proposed land use is not consistent with the zoning the city now has, that we have the ability to deny that proposal. It's not an ability that we take lightly, but we do have that option, and it gives us a lot of ability to work with the port to negotiate those points. We also will exercise permit authority on some uses that now are permitted exclusively by the port. So we regained the power in some cases that we previously had given up in an agreement. We have assurances from the port now that they will enforce their codes that they've adopted that affect projects on the port. In the past, they had the ability to exercise permit authority, but they didn't appear to have the same level of attention to enforce their codes that we have for permits that we issue. And so they have given us assurance on code enforcement that we previously did not have. We've added detailed procedures for reviewing port projects, either those that we permit or those that they permit. And so we've matured those procedures to the point that both sides are comfortable that we will be able to work together to make sure the permitting is accomplished in a timely manner. They have defined various port standards in this document that we have referred to that deal with issues such as crime prevention through environmental design, the use of lighting and how that might throw glare onto our adjacent properties and our streets, to conceal wireless telecommunications devices when visible from key locations. So those are all important standards that we have adopted as a part of this. Under stormwater, which is Exhibit B, we've maintained our current fee structure and standards. We dealt with this issue through a separate agreement a few years ago, and we have not renegotiated that agreement, so it continues to be enforced. We did agree to reevaluate the fee structure and standards when the port completes its major stormwater improvements, probably in 2008. It's one of the few items that we've actually agreed to not negotiate today, but to negotiate in the future. There were several of those in the 1997 ILA, and I'll be speaking on one of those in a moment. The L-shaped property, which, whose western border is on 28th Avenue, or 24th Avenue, I'm sorry, Ralph, and is north of 518, I think it'd be more apparent if you saw it on a map why we call it that. It's been a project, a property that the port acquired many years ago, demolished the residential housing, and has been holding in reserve for airport-related development for many years. In order to develop that property, they need some considerations from the city in terms of street vacations. We're very concerned about protecting the residential properties that lie east of this property, as well as how traffic will be handled. And the port has agreed in this to not develop that property until they have a letter of agreement from the city on how issues that I've just mentioned will be addressed. That's a significant concession on the part of the port, and one that we look forward to working with them on in the future. They have made a commitment to at-grade local access from South 188th Street and 28th Avenue South, and full commercial access from South 170th to the airport drives. We feel that those two are critical to maintaining the health of our business community here, and the port has agreed and has shown in good faith over a couple of years now their desire to work with us on those issues, and agreed to put in those protections in this document. One of the items that we dealt with as a promise to each other, the port and the city, in 1997 was to work on a joint transportation plan. And we have been doing that since 1997, to address the major capital roadway improvements to both the port and the city that will be necessary to help the port grow as it needs to and to protect the interests of the city. The parking tax is an element of that financing plan, and as Mr. McCracken spoke earlier, we've been working very hard on that and have come to a proposed understanding with the port that we think protects the city's interests in collecting the funds and spending the funds necessary to build the transportation infrastructure that the port and the city need. And I think we all feel very happy with that underlying agreement, and it's been quite a strain to get to this point. So we're very happy that, in fact, the proposed capital plan for, under the joint transportation planning process, will increase the parking tax by $34 million in additional revenues for city transportation improvement, and removes the debate that has been hanging out there about how much the city and the port will share in the revenues from parking taxes to be generated. Of the $84 million total to be generated by the new parking tax in the next 10 years, $54.5 million will be dedicated to direct improvements and maintenance of the city's highest priority transportation improvements. And the balance will be directed to transportation improvements that will serve airport-oriented traffic and pull that traffic off of our streets, thereby freeing up our existing streets for serving local traffic that is now actually being congested by airport-related traffic. In addition, the port has agreed that non-airport use projects will be subject to traffic impact fees. And so, and those uses are defined in Attachment A II. That's my summary. I could go into, I've got another 25 points here I could make to you. But as I said, I think the document largely stands on its own. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council has. But at this time, the staff does recommend the adoption of Agenda Bill 2579, which would authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the port, replacing the 1997 ILA with the document that we've distributed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend this girl to consent.
Is there any objection to Mr. White?
Yeah, I would prefer that this move to new business, certainly, and be open for discussion.
Okay. We will, at the request of Councilmember White... Okay, we will, at the request of Councilmember White, put it on new business. And does the council have any further questions of the city manager at this time? Hearing none, why we will go ahead and, city clerk, did you understand it's to go to new business? And I would like to just take a moment to thank our staff and particularly Craig and Mary sitting here that this has been a long, I think, a years-long negotiation and literally hundreds of meetings and everything and it's, you can see, it's a very technical, involved document and these folks just did a great job of negotiating it. And everything in here is for the benefit of the citizens of Sea-Tac. That was the whole purpose. The port doesn't have to do this either, they could tell us to get lost. So it's a great spirit of cooperation and we look forward to 10 years more.
Frank, council?
Oh, I would just say that thanks for thanking us, but we also have to thank Steve Butler and Dale Schroeder because we couldn't do it without them at all.
Yeah, I didn't mean to leave them out, I just was looking at you two. Mr. Brennan?
I'd just like you to make a couple comments on the value of the original ILA and what that did for the city and was in seven years we've had it.
Yeah, go ahead if you-
You want me to?
Yeah, you go ahead if you want.
Well, this is probably one of the most amazing, an ILA for those who don't know is an interlocal agreement that can be done between any two governments in the state of Washington. This is, in this case, the government of the Port of Seattle and the government of the city of Sea-Tac made this agreement seven years ago that profited the city in so many ways that, one facet of an illustration of the profit for the city, this building when we bought it, I think combined expenses of this building, purchased the building and do the complete re-outfit and now we have a city hall that stands out as a major improvement in the city. It's a wonderful facility for us to do business in. Bought this city hall with money that we received from the Port of Seattle and mitigation fees through the ILA between a $10 million outright mitigation and then behind the fences, all those streets and land, behind the fences that the port bought out, if you added up to those streets that turned into acres and acres of land that we actually turned around and sold the Port of Seattle for another $5 million?
Yeah, over that.
Over $5 million. So between that, the assets we got on that in our mitigation fee of $10 million, we purchased the city hall without going out for bond issue or anything else. So the people of the city of Sea-Tac didn't have to come up with any money. Now we are paying ourselves back, we mortgaged ourselves so to speak, we're paying that fund back with interest. So when that fund will be made whole again, we use the proceeds of that fund and the interest from those funds to buy things that aren't maybe usual budget item, very expensive piece of equipment, capital. If we have a capital project that we want to purchase, we can go ahead and perhaps do that right out of the funds that we put back together as a result of this mortgage we have for ourselves. So we still have a lot of money in that fund, we're paying ourselves back regularly. No other city gets that. The parking tax that Mr. McCracken referred to, that our parking lots as well as the port parking lot pays for almost all the transportation in the city. The reconstruction of International Boulevard, when we first named it International Boulevard, it was a joke. It was, had no sidewalks, center path, hookers were still working both sides of the street. That's all gone, sidewalks, curbs, gutter. It is a boulevard now and a great deal of that was paid from the parking tax. So the ILA was such a good thing for Sea-Tac and now we're updating it, moving it ahead and continuing it for another 10 years and it'll still continue to bring benefits to the people of Sea-Tac that other cities don't have. So I congratulate the staff, the original staff that did the original ILA and for the magnificent work that our present staff has done in preparing this one and giving us a wonderful opportunity here. So thank you Craig, thank you Mary, thank you Dale, if you're here. Thank you Steve Butler and all who had a part in this.
Mr. DeHan, did you?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is almost a ditto. I was fortunate enough to be the mayor when we executed the initial ILA and it was a monumental document at that point in time, groundbreaking. We really did strike out in a new direction. Our motto at the time was not to litigate but to actually discuss with the port what our differences were and do opt for mitigation. We did that. At the same time that we did it, we recognized that it was an imperfect document and I think that eight years ago when we first adopted it, we started looking at possible modifications to it whenever we decided, whenever we got around to looking at a renewal of this particular document. And I think that to echo what our fellow councilpeople have said, there's a great amount of effort that's gone into and I think that our current staff needs to really be complimented in the performance and the professionalism that they've used in dealing with the port. We've said before, it's kind of like waltzing with elephants when you're a small entity like we are and we're dealing with the Port of Seattle and we've done a magnificent job and I want to compliment them and look forward to having a full 10 years of another ILA.
Mr. White?
I feel somewhat in a difficult position because I may be the only one speaking out against this document and I find that very difficult because not only do the staff and the council members who were involved in drafting this have my admiration for their hard work, but they also have my affection. I'm very surprised at the amount of effort and hard work that has gone into this and good, clear thinking. The good part about this ILA is it's not embroiled in the controversies of the first. We're able to sit back and take our time and not feel under any huge amount of public pressure to bend one way or the other. And it would seem to me that lacking that public pressure, that should give us time to really review this and invite the public in. I consider myself, of course, a representative of the citizens with the responsibility of legislating on their behalf, but I prefer to think that I legislate with them, that I discuss these issues, have their input and take their input into consideration. We have reviewed this document in committees, however, I don't feel that the intention was to involve the public in that discussion. The Planning Committee, Planning Commission, I have an awful lot of respect for and would put before them anything that I thought was of a difficult nature. However, this document has not been before them and I think that that was an error. And I think it's, to some degree, that represents a disservice and I'm not sure why that was done, but I do assume that some of that was out of fear that there would be some sort of an uproar. And there is no uproar, this is an excellent document, we have made incredible gains. The issue for me is we have been making gains nearly every week during this process due to the hard work of all the staff members here. But I feel that somehow there is an artificial clock running in the background that says we have to have it done by a certain date. And even if I were to grant that this council should take this action, with the membership here, the people who have the most familiarity with the issue should take action, that does give us till December 31st to take that action. So I feel that trying to get this done in one evening today is an error, that there are still things that are being discussed, whether those are simply details where a "shall" is opposed to a "may" or other simple words which could have legal ramifications, but there are also some policy issues that I do still have some issue with. I'm not, my intention is not to hear them out right now and in public because they may be in-depth, but my intention would be to meet with the different departments, make sure that we have a good, clear understanding and proceed with this cautiously because this is a 10-year agreement. This is a defining document of the city and should be done so very deliberately. Although I may be alone on this issue and I don't mean to, it certainly bothers me to go against staff's recommendations and the other recommendations of the council, but it is my responsibility to speak my mind on this issue, so I will be voting no.
Mr. Fisher, please.
Well, I agree with a lot of things that he says. On the other hand, and I'll skip all the accolades to the staff, they've done a great job, but I think that if we went back, we could hassle this for another six months to a year, I don't believe we would gain any more than we already have because I think that they've done the job to put the pressure on the port as much as they can get. He's right, we've gained every time that we've drug our feet and sent them back to negotiate, but it's just come to my, in my opinion, you got to know when to fold them and I'm going to go along with this. I think we've did the best we could for the parking lot attendance, we was able to extend this out until they didn't get it all at one time and help competition to evolve in other places against them and we've pushed that as far as we can. So I don't think that we could gain any by going back and that's just my opinion and I have to rely on the staff and they're the professionals that put this together. I just don't think we're going to get any farther, so I'm going to vote for it.
Mr. Shape?
I do compliment the staff because I think that they've done a tremendous job. I also have sympathy with Councilman White's position. I realize that he's very sincere in his objections to this and that we all do represent the citizenship, but on the other hand, I have to agree with Councilman Fisher in that we have negotiated this thing to death and I don't think that we're going to gain anything by going on for another two or three months. Nothing would change, we would just be wasting a lot of time and I fully support this ILA the way it is written now.
Frank, can I make a short comment?
Yeah, Councilmember Anderson?
I think, I think we could, I agree with Ralph and Gene, we could play with this thing until our great-grandchildren produce great-grandchildren and we still wouldn't have it the way we want it. And having been through this several times before, I think before today, the economic situation at the Port of Seattle was in doubt to some extent. Of course, that no longer exists, so I don't think they would be very interested in negotiating something that would benefit us economically as readily as they might have been in the past. So my opinion, it's ready, it's ready to go, we've got them convinced and I truly believe that Craig and Mary and those who have been in on this and all the staff have just done a fantastic job, I mean, just an unbelievably fantastic job because I was, of course, here when we did the last one and it got to the point when one day you understood it and the next moment you didn't. I mean, it was really, this time we understood it and we understand it even though there's parts of it that I'd like to see a little different, but that's just neither here nor there. It's the best we can come up with in my opinion and I think some of us who've been here for a long time realize just how far we've come, so I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Mr. Dehan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't usually make second comments, but I will make an exception this time. In 1997, we realized that this was, the ILA was an imperfect document, as I mentioned. We started making proposed modifications to it, I think, from the get-go, so we've had eight years of working at these changes. I think we've negotiated some really good ones and I would expect that we will, after the signature of this particular document, we'll be looking at ways to make it better. The question comes down to how good is good enough and I think that we've reached a point now where this is the best document we can put together at this point in time and I would urge all of us to go ahead and ratify this and instruct the city manager to go ahead and finish this document and get it into effect right away.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Dehan and we will go ahead and move on now, but we will put it on at the request of Councilmember White on the new business. So, what did I call him, Chris?
His name is Chris White.
Chris White.
Ms. White?
Okay, Item 3 is a resolution amending the city council administrative policies and procedures providing for telephonic participation and voting by absent council members and Mark Johnson, our Assistant City Attorney, will make the presentation and when he's through, I'd like Mr. Shape, whose committee heard it this afternoon, to give us a report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Fisher to discuss the reasons for this proposed amendment. This is something that he brought to the legal department to discuss earlier a couple weeks ago and it's also been discussed previous to that and so the legal department has drafted an agenda bill and proposed a resolution to amend the council procedures and so I'll have Councilmember Fisher, if he wants to comment on the rationale for this.
This would come into play probably six times in the six years I've been here. One was on the ILA, one was on two city managers, one was on a police contract, one was on purchase of city hall. There's seven members are elected to this council and you citizens are paying for all seven to represent you. My problem is that sometimes that doesn't happen. We're not full-time paid people, we have jobs and so on and we, sometimes we're unavailable. The rest of the government doesn't do this and those of you that look through your federal and state legislators that are able to skip anything they want on a vote that could be public embarrassment to them because they have to vote, so they just leave town. And I'm saying that this will, one of the other things that you can do is you can set this up to, you know pretty much how people are going to vote, so you put it on the agenda while they're gone and you don't have the representation. So it's my contention, and this isn't going to happen, but very little, very little and only on major things, that we should make it available because of today's technology, I don't care if we put it on a computer and put it up there on the screen or whether we use phones and we participate in the conversation. They've checked it with the legal department and it's the same thing, well, nobody does it. Well, somebody can be a groundbreaker and I think that should be us. And we set, it was a pretty contentious arguments that we came up with today in the ANF committee. We thought of every possible thing that could go wrong and it all boils down that if it doesn't work, we can kick it out. And if the councilmembers believe that we don't need all seven people that are elected, then my suggestion is we go to five councilmembers and put the money in the bank. So I'd like to see this pass, that's the reason I brought it up and it isn't to be ducking votes, it's just everybody has a chance to represent their constituents who put them here.
Mr. Shape, would you care to comment as chairman of the ANF committee?
This resolution came before the ANF committee this afternoon and we discussed it thoroughly as Councilmember Fisher has pointed out. We were assured by council that there is nothing in law that prevents us from doing this, although there is a statement on here that we still don't know how the courts would view this. However, at this point, we have no means of not going ahead with this and it was the committee's decision that we would go ahead and try this on a conditional basis and like you say, Gene, if it doesn't work out, we can always throw it out. But basically, we did decide to go ahead with it.
Just one more comment.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, one more comment.
Maybe, I'll never mind, I just won't make a comment. I think that it speaks for itself, that there are seven people elected and I think that, I know I always want to hear, even if they disagree with me, I want to have their vote. Whether or not, and I think that they should want mine, or I hope they do, irregardless whether I'm here or not, it's just that people are not going to skip this. The councilmembers would ask me, well, what if people skip? And I said, would you? And everybody said, well, no, why would anybody else? If you're going to be here, then you're- If you're gonna be here, then you're gonna come here. You're not gonna come vote by phone, and it, ninety percent of it is staff recommendations anyway. It's just on the things that are really crucial. This has happened four or five times previous to this, and quite frankly, it wasn't legal. All this does is make it legal if it happens. If somebody's in the hospital, and
Joe.
Joe. They can vote, and this makes it legal.
Mr. White, did you wish to comment?
Yeah, I would hope that we actually rename this from 2570 to the Fisher bill, but I don't know if that would be quite legal. You know, I had apprehensions about this bill, because I don't even like absentee voting. I like people to get out there and do it. And I think that if you have, if you are for or against any kind of legislation, it's best done in person, where people can see just how angry you are. However, really, the, the point of what we have here is to have the full voice of the council, and I do understand that under certain circumstances, things can come up that are beyond our control, and we should be able to still weigh in on an issue and represent those constituents that voted us in. So I will support this legislation.
Consent agenda.
Can I, can I make a
Yes.
I'm, this is, I'm not a big fan of this, but I'm gonna vote for it. It's not, we can, because we can repeal it if we don't like it, but we, what really convinced me today was, they told me that, for those of you who don't know, if you miss three meetings unexcused, you're goodbye, you can be removed by the council. And so, people will not necess, and that means being here. That doesn't mean on the phone, that means being here. So, Councilmember Brennan was in the hospital one, at one occasion, and of course, he wasn't there because he wanted to be, and a critical vote came, he phoned, was on the telephone, and he phoned in. I happened to be stuck in Anchorage when the twin towers were hit, couldn't get out, there was no aircraft out. Trying to head and charter my own son to get home. But in any event, so there are circumstances when this would definitely apply, and I don't, I don't think anybody who's going to take the time, the money, and the energy to run for office is going to be lackadaisical about showing up for what this is a responsibility, and I would, and I, I mean, nobody gets into this job for the money. So, I think that, I think it'll fly. We should try it anyhow.
Mr. Deham, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to expand on this Fisher motion here for just a moment. Part of it is that four people, a quorum, has to be present in the council chambers in order for there to be held, a meeting to be held, and nobody can be present telephonically and have their presence applied to that quorum. So, we still have to have four people here physically in the, in the council chambers. Secondly, is I think that we've written into this ordinance that anybody who does come in telephonically to vote on a given item has to be present on the telephone and engage in the discussion that goes on prior to the vote. So, it's not just a case of having a councilperson call in, vote, and hang up again. They actually have to be in on the discussion that occurs prior to the vote and, and be a party to it. So I think that those are a couple safeguards that, that make this workable, and, and I would also go along with its passage.
Can we, Mr. Shape?
Just a couple of the comments that were brought up at our committee meeting today concerning this, if Councilman Brennan's in the hospital and he can't talk, could his wife vote for him? Well, it was
Oh, he speaks for me anyway.
She always does.
It was confirmed that, no, it would have to be him, but then the question comes up, how can we confirm that somebody at the other end of the telephone is actually that person? Well
I'll tell a joke.
That would do it.
Okay, can we refer the Fisher amendment to the consent agenda then?
Mr. Mayor, there's one, one housekeeping matters, the, the resolution that was presented to the council and the council packet, there was one modification that the committee wanted to make, and I've, I redrafted it, which I'll submit a copy to the city clerk, and if anybody needs to, to look at it, it was one word in paragraph two. The, the reading of paragraph two will start at electronic facilities exist and are operational so that the absent council member will participate in council discussions. The issue that came up in the A and F, or the A and F committee is that they wanted to make sure that they were, that members of, that were gonna be voting absentee were able to listen to all the discussions on a particular topic, not just call up, vote, and hang up and, and not listen to what anybody else had to say. So, that was, that was amended and in the draft, and I'll go ahead and hand that to the city clerk, so she has a copy for this evening.
Yeah, well, clerk, get us a hard copy of that prior to the vote.
And I have copies that I can
Oh, you've already got them, fine. Okay, we will put the Fisher amendment on the consent agenda, please.
That'll get you press, Eric will like that.
Number four, an ordinance increasing the monthly contribution to the city's VIBA expense fund. Steve Mahaffey, our human resources director, will tell us about this one.
Thank you.
Oh, this is, oh, this is one I've already seen.
Well, this is an ordinance that increases the city's VIBA contribution for council members from the current $577, which is actually a rate that was established in 2002, to $867 per month, which is based on the Association of Washington Cities rates for 2006. And the ordinance would be effective for council positions numbers two, four, and six on January 1st, 2006, and effective January 1st, 2008, for council positions one, three, five, and seven. And therefore, what would, this would achieve would be in 2008, that all council members would be receiving the same amount of VIBA contribution as opposed to the staggered amount that now exists. And then subsequently, every two years, we would bring forth a revised or a new agenda bill and ordinance to increase the amounts based upon the then-current rates. Therefore, the next time that this would come forward to council would be in 2007, at about this time, in September, October, for an effective date in 2010, since it requires an election of all council members before being effective. So, that would keep the process that the council members agreed to, which would be that all council members, starting in 2008, would be on the same schedule for VIBA contributions. The formula that, that this is based on is from, actually, 1996, when this was first introduced to the council. It's based on the healthcare benefit costs that is provided for C-TAC management employees, and reflects the Association of Washington Cities' rate for medical, for employee and spouse, and then family coverage for dental and vision. It, the, the ordinance that I just passed out today at the Administration and Finance Committee meeting and gave to the other council members just a minute ago, is a slightly revised ordinance. The, actually, the only changes I made was on page two, on the fourth whereas, what I wanted just to make sure that this reflected 2000, that this is the 2006 premium that we just received effective October 1st from the Association of Washington Cities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shape, would you care to comment on this one, please?
We discussed it at the A and F committee today, and the three members of the A and F committee happen to be the three that this does not affect, so it was quite a chivalrous act for us to go ahead and approve this.
I'll tie up your white horse.
Mr. Deham.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question, and I was, I was part of the committee that said we ought to pass this, so it won't affect me in 2006. I mean, section, let's see, sections four, on page three of the proposed ordinance, it says, in the second line, a review of any increases in the premium, and in the last line, it said for the purpose of increasing the trust contributions. And I just would ask the question, is it, is it possible that in the future, those would decrease, and if so, should we change that to changes in the event that premiums actually did go down so that the, the council, the contributions on behalf of the council could be reduced as well as increased?
Yes, that would be a good suggestion to make it changes instead of automatic increases. We have not experienced any decreases, we've only seen the double-digit increases for the last number of years, but you're correct that it could change at some point, and
This would not preclude a reduction in that if we change, if we made the change.
Right.
Mr. Fisher.
I think what we need to make sure everybody realizes is that the council's always behind the staff in their, because we can't just get automatic raises, and we're always playing catch-up, and I think the moral of the story is the council should at least catch up once in a while with the raising medical costs, and that's all this is doing, is catching us up.
That is correct, and as you point out, council members are always behind. Currently, you're receiving what was determined in 2002 to be the, the current rates. So, now that we're raising this to the 2006, council members will still be slightly behind what future increases will be.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I would just like to suggest that the council, if we are going to in the future, give ourselves more money that we do it swiftly without a whole lot of discussion. However, since we do have Eric here, I thought I'd give him, I'd give him a little bit of fodder. Really, the only, the primary concern I have is position number two. And you would be receiving that increase as of what date?
On January 1st, 2006.
2006, so that's not too, not too far off. Now, ordinarily, since that is my position, I would recuse myself, but since I have something to gain from this, I would like to ask that this be put on the consent agenda.
So if you get re-elected, you know.
He doesn't have an opponent, maybe the right invalid will get him.
He's really apt to lose, he doesn't have an opponent.
Mr. Mayor, request if we put on the consent agenda.
A question, if we make this change to the proposed language, instead of saying increases, make it changes, does that have to go on new business and, or can it still be on the consent agenda?
I can make this change immediately and just bring it back for council signature tonight, knowing that you unanimously agree that this should be a change that should be made.
Okay, we'll go to consent agenda and use a pen to correct it if you need to.
If somebody wants to challenge it, let
Only one word. Thank you. Agenda Bill 2591, a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year extension of the inter-local agreement among participating jurisdictions within the Green Duamish and Central Puget Sound watershed resource inventory area, Wira 9. Boy, that's a mouthful. 6:30.
Of course, there will be in 20 seconds.
No, we'll be done, I think, attorney, if we move along here.
Thank you, Mayor. I have with me tonight Dennis Clark, who is our representative in the watershed forum, and Dennis will be presenting a brief overview of the salmon habitat plan on the next agenda bill, and I'm sure Dennis can respond to any questions you might have on the inter-local agreement as well. As you said, the motion is to, for the council to extend our ILA with the Wira 9 watershed forum for a period of one year. In 1999, Chinook salmon and bull trout were listed on the endangered species list, and as a result, the Puget Sound region was under a federal mandate to address recovery of this resource. And so that was the impetus, I believe, for the watershed forums that were established. And our watershed forum is in the Green Duamish and nearshore areas. It includes 15 cities, C-TAC among them, and three other public agencies. And in 2000, these agencies drafted the ILA, and the purpose of the ILA was to establish a governance structure for the watershed forum. And the charge given to the watershed forum was to plan and program for conservation and recovery of the salmon resource in our watershed, and also to oversee implementation and funding. At this point, and that original ILA was effective in January of 2001, and was a five-year ILA, so it will expire in January of 2006, hence the request for the extension. Much of the work is done at this time. There are still a few items of work to be done, and that includes prioritizing some of the programs and plans that are recommended, identifying funding opportunities, and monitoring implementation of the programs recommended. So the watershed forum is asking for a one-year extension of the agreement. This would result in a cost to the city of C-TAC of slightly over $15,000, $15,507. We have tentatively budgeted $19,600 in the 2006 preliminary budget for this effort. Staff is recommending to council that we execute the, our, you, that council pass the motion extending the ILA for one year.
Mr. Schroeder, could I move you ahead to the next agenda bill? Aren't these pretty much under the same subject? Why do we have two different agenda bills?
Well, they, they are, although they require two different actions on part of the council. We have, the following agenda bill is a resolution which adopts the plan that it's currently completed by the watershed forum, and, and this item is to extend their, the ILA for one year so they can complete some of the work on funding and prioritizing and implementing the plan. So there are two separate actions required.
All right. Is there any discussion on 2591? We've gotta be moving along here. Consent agenda? Okay, we'll put 2591 on the consent agenda.
I could give you a long spiel about the fish.
Fort Ellis been sitting here all evening giving up his dinner for
Yeah, he, well, he just wants it passed.
I could give you a long spiel about the fish, but I'll
See how Dennis does on this next one.
Dennis made a special
Let's go right on to 2592, hopefully we can.
I, I talked Dennis into coming down here, so hopefully you can get through his presentation before the council passes the resolution. So I will turn it over to Dennis Clark at this point.
Thank you, Dale. Mayor Hanson, council members, members of the C-TAC community, thank you. I was last before you in April of 2004 and gave you a bit of an overview of the work we had been doing to date and laying out for you what was ahead of us, and I would like to take a few minutes just to record for your benefit what the money you've been paying into has accomplished in these last five years. So, direct your attention to the PowerPoint presentation, and I will talk about the Ria 9 or watershed salmon habitat plan, making our watershed fit for a king. And in contrast to the question that was asked a few days ago, the king in this case is, is not an Elvis impersonator, but it is the King Chinook salmon that is an icon of the Pacific Northwest. So I would like to just talk about the habitat plan itself, what has, what is in it, talk about the ratification process, which Dale referred to, and then talk about the implementation role that C-TAC would have if you choose to approve this. And this is all important, because the future of this habitat plan is in the hands of all of the local governments in South King County. C-TAC sits down towards the lower part of our watershed in Southern King County, and it's right on the boundary between what we call two of our subwatersheds. And part of C-TAC's watershed drains directly into Puget Sound, part of it drains into the Green Duamish River, but it's all included in this water resource inventory area, nine planning area. And it's, and the city is connected to these water bodies through a number of streams that drain into what we call the nearshore Puget Sound, direct, directly. And then it also includes some streams that drain into the Lower Green River, such as Johnson-O'Connell Creek and Angle Lake, and then, and Gilliam Creek. And then lastly, there are several streams that drain a little farther north into Riverton Creek. So the city is very much connected to these larger water bodies. And it's home And it's home to some of the smaller fish, not the king salmon, but some of the smaller salmonids that we are also interested in, such as coastal cutthroat and Coho salmon. While our plan is very much focused on salmon, we do like to emphasize that what we're doing is not just about the fish, because we too depend on healthy land and water for drinking water, food, and forest products. We also get a variety of services, such as flood protection at the local level, recreation, and of course, beautiful environment that draws so many people here in the first place. So at the end of the day, this is a plan about fish, but it's also going to be benefiting people. The, the plan itself, it came about as a result of the listing of Chinook salmon under the Endangered Species Act, and it requires us to take care of the habitat in which the fish are found, not just avoiding harm to the fish. And that's one of the reasons why back in 2000, the city did join with all the other local governments in South King County to develop the habitat portion of the Puget Sound recovery plan. At that time, we adopted, or rather, the local governments adopted a four-pronged approach that relied on two major efforts. One was to understand the science behind the decline of the fish and the other was to, to basically say, so what? What are we going to do about it? And so the two key things to take away from this figure is that the science, the, the science drove the habitat plan and that's a very important thing to take away. If you choose to sit down with this hefty document, you'll find that there are two chapters which are devoted to just laying out the path between the science to the policies and this rests on literally pounds of scientific information that's available elsewhere on our website and in paper form. The other thing is I'd note that arrow at the right-hand, lower right-hand corner, which shows that we're actually right on schedule. Five years after we started this process, our elected officials wouldn't let us study this to death and so we did get this done on time. The work of getting the habitat plan created was largely fell to a multi-stakeholder steering committee and you can see the partners here on the screen. More recently this year, we came out with the draft plan at the beginning of, in, in March, in the spring. We had a 45-day comment period, received many comments. They led to quite a few changes to the habitat plan to improve it. The steering committee finalized it in July and then they forwarded it to the forum of local governments, which is the body which has one representative of each of the local governments. They unanimously approved it and forwarded it on to all the local partner cities to act on. So what do you get if you sit down and take a look at this habitat plan? You'll find that it has 77 on-the-ground projects to restore habitat and of these 56 are particularly high priority. You'll see that if we were to do every single one of them, it would cost between $200 and $300 million over the first 10 years of the plan. We don't expect to be able to do that simply because a lot of these depend on the cooperation of private property owners. So the plan simply lists all, the best projects that we could do with expectation we'll only be able to do a fraction of them. Complementing that, the actual moving dirt and putting tree trunks in the river type projects are what we call protection projects to protect the good habitat that still exists in our watershed. The projects are based on sound science and what we call an ecological economics analysis, where we tried to look at the, all those other values that we get from healthy environment. And again, all this is tied back to the fact that by improving the watershed, we are going to be increasing benefits to people as well as fish. Types of projects you'll see include things like levee setbacks, placing more gravel in the river for spawning for the fish, protecting habitat through a variety of techniques that are appropriate for the interest of the property owner, increasing habitat in what's called the transition zone, a very small section of the river found in Tuck Willa, King County and Seattle. And that's one of those real gems of the scientific work. It told us that, you know, we could do a lot of work throughout the watershed, but there are a couple of key areas which are essential to address. This is one of them. By doing this, we'll be removing a bottleneck that constraints the entire population in the watershed. And then in the marine areas, doing things like removing bulkheadings where possible, such as in this project in Seahurst Park, which was very successful and looked to, from all around Puget Sound, as a real groundbreaking type of project for salmon habitat. Although the city doesn't have these major water bodies within its boundaries, the city is nonetheless connected through the streams, as I mentioned, and significantly through your stormwater runoff to the rest of the watershed. So you'll find in the plan that there are also some policies and programs that'll be relevant to the city, including things like promoting low-impact development, promoting and retaining forest cover, not just in the rural areas, but there's a role for that in our urban areas. Road maintenance and stormwater management programs, many of these things you're already doing, so it may be simply a matter of refinement to, to follow the recommendations in the plan. Incentives for protection and restoration for the, the private property landowners. And then education and stewardship, because government alone is not going to solve the problem of salmon decline. We do need to engage our, our citizens more in these actions. If you want to look particularly at these types of actions and the ones that might be most relevant to the city, I, I recommend to you chapters three, five, and eight. So who's going to pay for all these great ideas? The funding is supposed to come from four major sources, including federal appropriations for projects in the Green Duamish part of our watershed. We've already received about $2 million for that. State and federal grants from the state salmon recovery funding board. On average, in the last five years, we received $1.4 million per year for that. Mitigation funds from major capital projects, such as the expansion of Interstate 405. And then King Conservation District funds have been providing a source of funds for recent years and should that fee be increased in the years ahead, there could be additional funds coming that way. $1 million in local funds has already been marshaled to begin implementing this. As Dale referred, mentioned, we are already trying to implement this and accelerate the good work that's being done now. The ratification process is relatively straightforward. Most of the cities are looking at this in October and November, when five of the jurisdictions in South King County representing 70% of the, of the population, that is the human population, not the fish population, once they've adopted the plan, then it takes effect. The inter-local agreement, which funds the work in this, in this regard, it helps pay for me and other folks to do this work for you, would be reduced in terms of the amount next year and consequently, the city's share, should you choose to extend the inter-local agreement, would also be reduced because we're done with the planning and now we're trying to get more action done on the ground. C-TAC's share in the watershed is about 4%. Your role and in implementing the plan would be to do things as resources allow, would be to continue to work with other local governments to get these actions carried out, implementing the relevant programs that you, in many cases, already are doing, such as your national pollutant discharge elimination system, phase two stormwater permits, encouraging citizen participation in projects that get things done on the ground, encouraging salmon-friendly practices, such as our, the natural yard care program, and working with all the other watershed jurisdictions in what has been to date a very successful effort to raise funds from federal and state sources to get these watershed significant projects done. So to summarize, I gave you a sense of what your contribution has, has created in the last five years in the form of the habitat plan. It's available online. We have CD-ROMs, there are copies in the back for citizens who might be interested in looking at it. And we also have shorter executive summaries. We also have a poster, which will provide several to the city, which try and, just one poster, summarize this entire plan. The ratification process, Dale's already outlined to you, and then if you choose to implement it, we would be looking forward to working with, with your staff in the years ahead to get these projects and programs and policies carried out. So again, your choices tonight will help shape the future of the salmon habitat plan and in general, the health of the watershed in Southern King County. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Well, thank you, Dennis. Mr. Shape, we've got to move on rather smartly.
Does that mean hurry up?
Whenever we can.
Dennis, you mentioned that some of your capital projects would not be completed because they're on private property. Is that a lack of funding or a lack of cooperation from the private parties and do you have any legal means to force cooperation?
To answer the first question, or last question first, no, we do not have any means to, to force projects on, on private property owners who are not interested, nor are we particularly interested in doing that. We have quite a few projects we could do on public properties to begin with. It, it really depends on the interest of the private property owner in working with us. And in some cases, we had to develop these projects before we could go out and talk to the property owners. It's always a chicken and egg thing. Do you try and get your ideas developed before you go talk to the property owner or do you wait and try and use the property owner's ideas to, to develop them? And we did that with some projects and others, we couldn't do it. The bottom line is that we have a lot of opportunities out there and the key constraint for us will be money rather than access to the land, I believe.
Okay, can we move this to the consent agenda? Is there any objection to...
You want me to talk about it?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. You make a great presentation. I'm sorry, we're a little short of time. Very interesting subject.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, and now on 2592, can we address that briefly? Can we combine those pretty much, Dale?
We did. Yes, I'll, I'll make this brief. 25... Oh, 2592. This would be the...
98, don't you...
The, passing the resolution, I believe you just put that on consent calendar?
Yeah, we just put that in.
Okay, 2598. This is a resolution expressing council opposition to initiative 912.
Oh, I was, actually, that my copy says Agenda Bill 2592, resolution ratifying the Green Duamish watershed, blah, blah.
Okay. And if it's the council's desire, that could go on the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll put both of these on the consent agenda then, okay?
Works.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you for your time and support.
Nice presentation.
Yeah. And, okay, Dale, you started to talk about 912. Go ahead again, please.
Okay, the, the next council agenda bill is a, a resolution expressing council opposition to initiative 912. Several of the cities in the region have passed similar resolutions. We're offering this to the city council to do as you choose, either to pass or, or not. I do feel it's my responsibility to tell you some of the projects that are proposed to be funded if the gas tax stays in place, which directly impact the city of C-TAC. And those include partial funding of State Route 509, funding of a third lane on State Route, third eastbound lane on State Route 518, also includes improvements to the 509-518 interchange in our immediate area. There are a number of projects in the region which are significant, significant to the city of C-TAC and our citizens. Among them are fully funded improvement to the interchange at Highway 167, 405, also improvements along the 405 corridor to make that corridor function better. In all, there are a total of 247 projects statewide. About half of those are in the Puget Sound region. And the total amount over the, the 10-year period is slightly, in the Puget Sound region is about $5.3 billion. So it is a significant amount of funds. It, it won't go to resolving all of our transportation issues in the area, but it certainly would be a good start. Are there any questions?
Dehan, would you care to comment?
Just a question, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Dale, this, this nine and a half cents is, is any of this being collected, the nine and a half cents now?
Yes. I believe it was enacted, took effect in...
Three cents.
July. So, yeah, there are three cents in the first year.
Would that three cents get repealed as well with 912 or just, or just the six and a half cents remaining?
No, it would repeal the, the three cents that's currently in place. It would repeal that if the initiative passes.
Well, I would encourage the council to support this resolution. This 912 could be a disaster for everything we've worked so hard on, on transportation. And I realize this is just an advisory thing, but it's sure bad news for us if 912 passes. Have any comment on...
I just have one comment. I want it to be perfectly clear to anyone who's sitting out there that we are voting as a council, we are not voting for the, for the voting public because, on this, because we cannot take their vote away from them. So this is strictly the matter of the seven of us giving a vote, not, we're not representing the citizens of C-TAC in their vote, vote on this.
Consent agenda, okay. Consent?
Thank you.
Okay, the fire chief advised me, 2596, that he can do it very quickly. We're going to run a little behind on the start of our regular meeting and, but we've just got a couple of things to clear up here and then we'll move into our regular meeting. Go ahead, Chief Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this went to PSNJ and A&amp;F today. What we're asking you to do is, we have used fire hose, about 6,000 feet worth. We're asking you to take a little step out of the box and donate it to fire departments in need in the Gulf Coast who could use this hose instead of us surplusing it. And the US Fire Administration is managing that program and they'll pay for all the shipping and handling to get it there. It's really the right thing that the fire department needs to do.
Consent.
Consent agenda.
Why are we surplusing this hose, Chief?
The hose is past its life fitness for us and it's, it no longer meets our standard.
Okay, we'll put it on the consent agenda. Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
How'd you guys, you hung around for that?
And now we got a discussion of the summary of the $5,000 to $25,000 purchase request for the period ended October 7th. Craig Ward, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is $14,625, supposed to be expended to Cassade Design Collaborative, one of three, four firms that we approached with the scope of work to do a feasibility analysis for the Riverton Heights property regarding potential acquisition. It's to look at land use alternatives, which we'll bring back to the council. And I, I am obligated to inform you, however, that this is just money for this contract that quite clearly should the council choose to go forward to further consider this property, we're likely to need some additional money, up to about $5,000 for an economic assessment of the alternatives that the council wants to further explore. In addition, we'll need a site survey and a, an appraisal done of the property should we continue to march down that path. And each of those will cost some additional funds. We don't know yet how much those will be, be likely to bring back those expenses to you in future purchase.
Okay, is there any objection to...
Consent.
Consent agenda? I don't see an agenda bill number on it, but...
Five to 25.
Five to 25. Okay, we'll put that on the consent agenda too. And that brings our regular study session items to a close. And since we're running a little behind schedule, I'm going to declare a five-minute recess for a potty break and...
We could be more specific.
We'd like to get into detail, Frank.
And we will reconvene as soon... We've been sitting there a long time, right?
Frank's gone. The line builds up.
I'm old, Chris, you gotta...
Pass on, so it's okay.
That's right. Reconvene.
We got both ends of the covered. Yeah.
I see Joe found two pretty girls out there. You can't get him away from them.
Yes ma'am. You got them with you, your pills?
No, they're all, I'll just shake it till I get them. Tell you, I can't believe I've won so much today, I can't hardly breathe. I oughta go back, stay out fishing all the time.
They're gone Judith. So I just have to say we're not...
Yeah.
Doesn't help when the bottle's so full.
This is a long day.
Yes. Jeez, look what I did. Talking to you about it. I opened it up and it spilled out. Now I gotta stay here till it dries.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are about to begin. We have recessed the study session into our regular council meeting for October 11th, 2005. And with the clerk, call a roll for the regular meeting, please.
Mayor Frank Hanson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Terry Anderson. Council members Jean Fisher.
Here.
Chris White.
Here.
Ralph Shape.
Here.
Joe Brennan.
Here.
And Don DeHan.
Here.
Council complete.
Thank you. We have four people signed up for public comment and, of course, our first presenter is to do with the Tai High School Health Plan. So if you want to, you could wait and comment after the presentation. Does anyone want to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll call on the public comment immediately following the presentation on the Tai High School Health Plan.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the city manager please? Can you figure out what's the matter with that thermostat? You could hang meat in here. Go fix it Frank.
Well, thank you all for coming. And our first item of business is a presentation on the Tai High School Health Clinic. And we're very pleased to have King County Councilperson Julia Patterson. And she's got a high-powered crew with her. We haven't had this many notables in the room for many years. Tom, how are you?
Good Frank, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
And Colleen, she's Miss Everthing at the school.
We have a seizure.
Yeah, yeah. Hi fellas.
Hi.
So would you introduce your team to...
You forgot the principal, new principal at Tai.
Max, hi Max.
Very handsome.
Max isn't new.
Ah, he's been around. But this is a very prestigious group and we're delighted to have them come here and tell us about what they propose. Go ahead please, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Sea-Tac City Council. My name is Julia Patterson, I'm a member of the King County Council. And I'm here this evening to talk to you about the idea that it may make extraordinary good sense to consider the idea of investing in a school-linked health clinic at Tai High School. And I'm going to introduce this topic to you and then I'm going to allow these professionals to give you some more of the details that hopefully will bring you to the place where you will agree. So first of all, I have made a request to the Budget Chair at King County. And I'd like to ask the clerk if she could please pass that request. I'd like you to see the document that I've given to the Budget Chair, Larry Gossett of the King County Council. And I've asked the King County Council to appropriate no more than $50,000 to plan and administer a one-year pilot school-based health facility for the students, and the students only, at Tai High School. The $50,000 allocation would be pending a funding match from the city of Sea-Tac. And if the city of Sea-Tac chose to match at a lower rate than that, then the remainder of that balance would then be allocated to the Renton Area Youth and Family Services Organization. I went on to tell our Budget Chair that this is a pilot project and at the end of one year, that community health centers who will be presenting later this evening to you must provide a report to both the King County Council as well as the Sea-Tac City Council with a variety of statistical information, including the number of visits, the types of illnesses and issues that were treated at Tai, the number of students who are lacking insurance, the percentage of students treated that live in the city of Sea-Tac limits. Tai High School is in, I have been informed and I have concluded, that Tai High School is in great need of public health services. And you're gonna hear more about that tonight. But as a life, almost a lifelong resident, since I was about nine years old, of the city of Sea-Tac, which became a city in 1989, and a graduate of Tai High School, I want you to know that Tai High School today is not the same Tai High School that I graduated from in 1971. It is a different school. And the city of Sea-Tac and our neighborhoods are different than they were when I was growing up and even as a young woman in this city. And I've been made aware of some information just lately that I wanted to share with you. First of all, you're probably aware of the fact that 42% of the people who live in the city of Sea-Tac are people of color. Forty-two, we're getting close to one-half of our city is now comprised of people of color. The other thing that I thought was very interesting is that the rate of free and reduced lunch percentages of kids in King County who are getting, who are eligible for free or reduced lunch, King County statistically, the entire county, it's 28% of our kids are eligible for free and reduced lunch. But in the city of Sea-Tac, that number rises to about 63%. And it is shocking to me to have to tell you that 85% of the students at Madrona Elementary are eligible for free or reduced lunch and 75% at Bow Lake Elementary. It's a direct indicator of poverty. The next thing I was made aware of is the fact that the people in the city of Sea-Tac are working. And they are working more than the average statistical, statistically, in Washington State, there's about a 6% unemployment rate. In the city of Sea-Tac, that unemployment rate is 5.4%. So our poor are not poor because they aren't working. City of Sea-Tac is home to the working poor. Some other interesting statistics that I've been made aware of, and believe me, I was not aware of these things even though I live right in the heart of the city. With our kids, in King County, the number of kids who have never had a preventative healthcare visit, the statistic is 4.8% in King County as a whole. But in the city of Sea-Tac, that number is 15%. 15% of our kids have never been to the doctor, those high school kids. It's an amazing statistic. The number of parents in King County, the number of fathers in King County who do not have a high school diploma, the average is 6.5%. But the number of fathers whose children attend Tai, that number is 21%. The adolescent birth rate, King County as a whole, 11% of our adolescent girls are having babies. But in the city of Sea-Tac, and this is quite shocking, 24% of our girls in the city of Sea-Tac are having a baby before the age of 18. So this, I have a lot more statistics that I could share with you here and I think that they'll be handed out to you later. But my point is this, is that it has been brought to my attention that our young people, our youth at Tai High School, and by the way, 100% of the kids who live in the city of Sea-Tac are in the Tai service area, that our Tai High School, the kids in our city, our citizens are in need. And this is a way, in my opinion, that we can provide direct health and human services to those kids. The city of Sea-Tac is very generous with human services dollars, but they go out to the region, which is appropriate. But here's an idea for you to consider. It's a new idea, but it's a way to get those services directly to our kids who are citizens of this city. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to turn this over now to the professionals who can give you more information about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, are you next Dehan?
I think I am.
You gotta talk right into that microphone there.
Okay, I'll do that.
There you go.
Before I get started on, on this particular project, I wanna express my appreciation to the council and the mayor. It's us on, there it is. I guess you do have to speak right into it. For the kinds of partnerships that we've had over the last couple of years, particularly developing the clinic with the Lutheran Community Services Building just up the street, and the support that Sea-Tac has given to community health centers of King County over the years. It's, it's something that we're very proud of and that we know is very much needed by the residents of Sea-Tac. And, and it really helps us help people stay healthy. What I do wanna kind of talk specifically about tonight is kind of what we know about kids and healthcare and what we know about need here at Tai specifically. We know this about kids in healthcare, we know this from the standpoint of being a community health center. We know that kids in general are a high-need population. They do have lots of healthcare needs. And we also know that they're a very challenging group to get into healthcare. You've all heard the term young immortals. And a lot of the, a lot of the kids, particularly who are in high school age, just really don't think there's anything that they need to be worrying about. And that runs the gamut from whether they've got a sniffle or whether they're thinking about what kind of choices they're making in their lifestyles and their healthy behaviors. We also know that the typical clinic setting that you and I are all used to going to, the normal doctor's office, isn't a setting that typically works for kids. And it's even, works even less for kids who haven't had experiences with the healthcare system. That really arranging things that speaks to the kids at their level really works in terms of making it a much more user-friendly, if you will, place for kids to go and get the help and the care that they need. What we know about Tai specifically, Councilmember Patterson just articulated, I think, quite adequately, but just, and I have some data sheets I wanna pass out to you guys, but I will give it to the clerk. They're in color and I wanted to wait before I did that.
Okay.
We know at Tai, compared to the rest of King County, we have a much greater percentage of people of color and non-English speaking students. We know that we have a greater percentage of parents of those kids who don't have high school diplomas and education is a family deal. We know that there's a greater percentage of people who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. We know there's a higher adolescent rate, adolescent birth rate. We know that there's more use of tobacco and other substances that we don't want the kids to be using. And we know that three times as many kids as on average have never had a preventive health visit. So when Julia said they've never been to the doctor, she was right. They've never been to the doctor, the way we think about going to the doctor to be healthy. Bringing services to Sea-Tac and to Tai has been a very high priority for our organization, Community Health Centers of King County. We, part of our mission is to really know where need exists and really do what we can to help meet that need. It's why we went into partnership with you all and with Lutheran Community Services to put the health center up the block. And it's why we're in partnership with Tai High and with you to help put health services at Tai High where we know that they're needed and in a way that we know that they will work. We've really been looking for the right partners and we think this, that you are a right partner for us to do this. Your city's help is greatly needed and would be greatly appreciated by our organization and by the students and staff at Tai, and I think it would benefit the community greatly. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Debbie Wilkinson, and I'd like to introduce her because she's my star. She's our chief operating officer and Debbie's gonna talk a little bit about how we envision this clinic working.
Good evening and I also would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present to you our idea as Julia said. We really do feel committed to this project as an organization and feel like there is great need, as Tom has already stated. I'm just gonna tell you a little bit of what the program would look like because that's what I would have responsibility for. We would be looking at a school-based health center that would take up, it'd be about 500 square feet in, I forget the building number. And that would accommodate primary care services. And when we talk about primary care services, what we're talking about are immunizations, preventive healthcare, acute healthcare, so kids when they come to school and they're actually sick that need help. Disease management for many, many kids that are at Tai that already have diabetes or other chronic healthcare conditions. And just as a reminder to you that Tai is one of the high schools in the area, in one of the few that actually has a high needs student population. And I, I believe it's a, it's a special needs group that attends within Tai. And those are kids who do have feeding tubes and pretty serious illnesses that right now, if something happens with those kids, you know, you have to go off campus to have any support for that. So just to remind you of that, this would be something we would be providing. Also, just the all-around kinds of things that kids need, sports physicals, for example, trying to keep kids able to play in sports at the school. It is a huge roadblock for kids, so we would be providing that service. We would also be providing a lot of healthcare education for both the students and their families. We see that as a, as a role that we would play. So the clinic to provide these, what is truly primary care services, we would be, have a nurse practitioner on, on campus as well as a medical assistant who would assist the nurse practitioner in the actual medical care. We would also have an administrative clients, what we call a client service representative that would also work with the kids and their families to help them access referral to specialty care and the other things that we could not provide in the school-based health center, but, but provide that bridge to those things. As well as helping them to enroll in healthcare coverage. It's astounding how many kids actually are eligible for coverage, but their families don't even know where to go. So we would be providing some of that service as well. So we would be providing some of that service as well. As well as partnering on campus with the other community services that are there as far as mental health counseling and bridging that gap between a healthcare provider and mental health services that are currently offered on the campus. And really and truly, let me just say to you that our goal in having a school-based health center is keeping kids healthy, keeping kids in school, keeping their families working so that they're not having to leave their jobs when their kids are sick, and to keep kids so that they graduate with a diploma. That's really what we want to do. We want to keep them healthy so they get all the way through, they graduate and go on to other areas of their life. So Max?
Thanks, and I'm Max Silverman, the principal at Taiyi High School. And it's always great to be here or to have you at Taiyi, because it seems every time I'm with a council member, we're typically celebrating something great that's happening because of our partnership. And sometimes it's at an AOTT breakfast, celebrating our students going off to college with scholarships that you help provide, or it's celebrating our after-school program which you support, or work with a law enforcement officer provided by the city. We're always seem to be doing something together that strengthens the community, and I think the teen health center is another step we can take towards strengthening our partnership. And I did some research. I was asked how many of our students at Taiyi reside in Sea-Tac. So of our 1,050 students, close to 800, 796 reside in Sea-Tac. And we are the only high school that serves City of Sea-Tac, meaning every high school student who lives in Sea-Tac is assigned to Taiyi High School. So we serve a large chunk of the city of Sea-Tac, and again, almost 80 percent of the students we serve live in Sea-Tac. And we're often asked, what's the role of the school and the role of the community? And my response typically is, our job at the school is really to educate students and to work with you to create a healthier community. And it's nice to be here. I don't know if anybody's checked our WESL scores lately, but the WESL scores at Taiyi are going way up. Our college admission rate at the UW is going way up. Our GPA of our freshmen at the UW is going way up. The things that we're doing on our campus right now for our students is working. A recent survey of ninth graders just showed that many more feel safe at Taiyi while doing that with our suspensions going down. So I think if you drive by the Taiyi parking lot at 4:30 or 5:00, you'll still see staff cars. Those are the same staff that get there at 6:30 in the morning. So I feel we have many staff, educators and non-educators on campus, doing the best they can for our kids. Some of the results from that is our data looks great, and our school is getting better. This year, we'll host visitors from Los Angeles, Austin, Texas, Charlotte, North Carolina, and Boston, Massachusetts, who want to come to Taiyi to see not only what's happening in our classroom, but what's happening in our community engagement office through Colleen. And a lot of that work is in partnership with the city of Sea-Tac. So I think we all can be proud that we're building a model right next door that's really working for the community and is getting recognition. When it comes to health, we're sort of at a stopping point right now on our campus because we're not healthcare providers, we're educators. Yet many of our students can't access the education we're offering because, for many of them, simple healthcare issues. Just the other day, we had a student have a seizure right after lunch. Unfortunately, that's not uncommon, that we have a number of students with seizure disorders, which, from what I understand, is actually managed pretty well with regular medication. We have students with asthma. I have asthma. I carry my inhaler. I don't get asthma attacks because I know how to manage my medicine. We have students who will miss a couple of weeks of school for a severe asthma attack. That's not to mention students who can't play sports or come out for sports late because they can't get physicals, or students who miss school because they don't have immunizations. These are basic healthcare needs that, if we can address them on campus, allows educators to do their job better, which is to educate students. Now, while this is going on during the school day, many of you know Colleen and know that she's worked very aggressively with the city and other partners, really to provide a safety net right on campus for our kids and their families. By doing that, we remove many barriers to what's happening in the classroom. I think we all can agree that healthy kids, a healthy school means a healthy community. And so that's really what we're here to talk about, is that partnership. I'd like Colleen to talk a little bit about some of the other things happening on campus that she's worked so hard to provide, and that many of that, again, has been in partnership with you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. It's great to see each of you again. I've had the privilege to present in front of you before, and my message is still the same, in that Taiyi's goal has always been to be an asset to this community. It is your high school, and it really is about being an asset to the people that live here and to be able to provide services where we see gaps. We've opened our campus up to many providers. We have quarterly provider meetings, so those providers actually come together and share. People like Ruth Dykman, Community Health of King County, Lutheran Community Services, Horizon Drug Treatment Services, King County, yeah, Parks and Recreation. Thank you. And King County Work Training are some of the many services that we partner with. And so, as I said, our goal really is to look at where our gaps are, where our needs are for our youth, and to be able to break down the barriers to accessing those services by providing them right on campus. Our goal really is to continue to build that community model and to continue to invite providers onto our campus, opening our doors, making our buildings available to them free of charge, so that we really can wrap these services around youth, so that when they come to school, they really are ready to learn. And so, healthcare, as Max said, and all the others here, has really been one of the barriers that we continue to face and we continue to try to hurdle. And we really do recognize that if we could provide that on campus, we would be meeting a tremendous number of our students' needs. We have a school nurse there that does her best to try to refer when she can't meet those needs, but to be able to provide a family practice provider, a nurse practitioner to meet those needs would be an amazing thing for all of our kids and for this community to be able to provide a healthier community for all of us. So again, I thank you for allowing us to be here, and I hope you realize that, again, our goal really is to be an asset to you as council people and to this community and to provide services to the people that live here.
Thank you. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. My name is Phyllis Byers. If I haven't mentioned before, I'm on the Highline School Board. I just wanted to say that the Highline School Board truly appreciates the collaboration that has gone on between the city of Sea-Tac and the Highline School District. We recognize how much Sea-Tac has supported our programs and many things that we couldn't have done without the city of Sea-Tac. You have always supported our bonds and levies, and we're very appreciative. One of the wonderful things that's coming out of this last bond that was passed in 2002 with absolutely no extra cost to our taxpayers is the rebuilding of Bow Lake Elementary. It's a very exciting project. I was just briefed on the project two weeks ago and got to see the architects rendering, and honestly, it is going to be an unbelievable asset to this community. And part of the reason is, is the collaboration with the city of Sea-Tac for the community use room. And I don't know all the details. I do know that Bow Lake is one of the elementary, a few elementary schools in our entire district, which covers five municipalities. That gets used more than any other building by our community, and with the help of Sea-Tac, it will be used even more. And that's what our goal is, is to have all of our schools be community schools. As you know, Bow Lake and Medrona feed directly into Taiyi, and to have more services provided, more community use provided, is nothing but a bonus for our families. Our families deserve this. Our community deserves this. One of the things that the board is prepared to do is to support the Taiyi school-based health and, in collaboration with the city of Sea-Tac, in partnership to provide space, staffing, and support through the Taiyi Community Engagement Office. I can't thank you enough for what you've done for us, and I know that what we have together is a wonderful thing. I am a graduate, as Julia is, from Taiyi High School. This is a different community than when we graduated from school, but I can tell you I wouldn't live anywhere else. And I really am grateful for all your support, and I'm looking forward to this community health-based organization. I can think of many times that not just the poor or the underinsured would be using that community-based service. Many of our students need that just because it makes them comfortable. They need a comfortable place to go. So thank you again.
Oh, you bet. That's very enlightening. Oh, so one question that popped into my mind. Does the Highline School District supply a nurse at these schools, not presently?
Yes, they do. I'm not sure Max could answer that, if it's a full FTE.
We have a nurse two and a half days a week.
So it is not. It's a .5 FTE. Unfortunately, the state funding has, every year, been cut in many areas with the addition of unfunded mandates. And honestly, you know, our primary mission is to educate our students. Unfortunately, the things that don't get paid for are health services.
Actually, Julia, will you want to proceed with your program here? Where do we go from here?
We came in this evening to simply make a present, this is an idea that we wanted to provide to you for your consideration. And this is not being done anywhere else outside of the city of Seattle. If you decided that you wanted to take this innovative approach to providing services to our kids, I believe that you would see suburban cities fall in line after our statistical data comes back a year from now, showing the good that we are doing for our kids. So, like I said, this is simply an idea that no one is expecting anything. I believe in it. And for that reason, I have appropriated and received a guarantee from the King County Budget Chair, $50,000. Now, if you choose to match $50,000, $50,000 will be there. If you can't come up with that amount, then there's another very worthy organization, the Renton Area Youth and Family Services. I'm going to ask the budget provisor to have it go there. But it is there for you if you believe that this is a worthy idea, if you'd like to partner.
Mr. Brennan, I know populated the school for several years there.
We had five kids on the beach who went through Taiyi. Now, the oldest one is 50 years old. He's a health radiation physicist for the state of Washington, so he put out a good thing there, and all the kids are doing very well. I have several questions involved. You mentioned, if we don't do this, the money will go to Renton. Does Renton have to put up 50 or matching funds?
The funding would go to Renton Area Youth and Family Services, and they are an organization that receives their funding from a multitude of different entities. So there's matching funds that comes to them from all over, from the state, from the city of Renton, from King County, from everywhere. They do not have a school-linked health clinic. What they do is they provide an array of services to kids, mental health services, all different kinds of services, all kinds of different human services.
If our city was to get involved in this, what would happen at the end of the year?
At the end of the year, this would be a one-year pilot project. At the end of the year, we would ask Mr. Trumpeter to come back and make a presentation to the King County Council and to the Sea-Tac City Council to indicate to us the degree of need that there was, how many students took advantage of the clinic, what sort of illnesses were treated, how many of those kids didn't have health insurance. He would bring back to us a report to help us realize whether or not our investment was worthy of continuation.
Would we be able to depend on King County to continue with their contribution?
Now, that's an excellent question. That would probably depend upon your King County Council person. But I am committed to making that a priority during my term.
The only communications that I received was a letter that indicated that the parents of the students would also be involved in this clinic. Is that true?
Well, could you explain what you mean by involved? We would have parents, we are looking for some advisory capacity.
I mean, as patients.
No, not at the school-based health center. We would not be seeing adults.
I'm all for volunteer parents coming on the campus anytime they can.
Yeah, no, this is.
I wouldn't want adults carrying disease to be coming back and forth on campus.
Correct, no.
This clinic would be for the kids. And part of what we were talking about earlier is, we'll make it for the kids. And if it is for the kids, the kids will use it. If it's just for anybody, they're not going to use it. We know that from other experiences. So we would make sure that the school-based health center was for the kids and the kids only.
Good. And then the one other thing is, I had one other point I wanted to make. Go ahead if somebody else has.
Come shake.
I'd like to ask Phyllis a question about, we realize the poverty level in Taiyi High School is very high, and the need is very great, but we also know that following behind them, Chinook is probably as bad, and Bow Lake, you say, is even worse. Now, what kind of nursing facilities do those two schools have, or do they have anything? Does the nurse visit those also?
Absolutely. The nurse, and I don't have that data in front of me as far as what, how much nursing time goes on, but the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program is at both Bow Lake and Chinook along with Taiyi. There is a specialist there for that program. There is a nurse on campus. I cannot tell you at this time how many hours a week the nurse is there, but all of our schools have nurses. Unfortunately, our nurses have, the staffing time has been cut, and many of them have to share several campuses a week.
When these students at these other two schools have medical problems, will they perhaps be taken to the clinic at Taiyi?
You know, I don't know. That's a really excellent question.
We have had discussions, and yes, we could make accommodations to have those kids seen. I mean, obviously, the junior high school is just right next door, and so we've had discussions with Max and as well of the principals of those schools. And elementary school, probably not, but definitely the junior high school, because those people are, those students are, you can transfer them and accommodate them to be seen.
It sounds like you would be rapidly overwhelmed.
Well, you know, I think the need is great.
Yes, it is.
I don't want to deny that. I actually was instrumental and very involved in starting the school-linked health center that is Emburian. So I'm well aware of the need, well aware of knowing what it takes to take care of these kids. I think that we would be busy, there's no doubt about it, but the thing about a school-based health center is that you really are looking at the student population of that school, and you match your program to what that population is. As the need, we understand the need better, perhaps of the junior high schools and beyond that, we would probably have to make some sort of accommodation for that, but we have to start somewhere, and a school-based health center is a wonderful way to do that because you do have a captured need. You can look at that, identify that, and develop a program that really meets that, and as you need to expand that, you have a better, more controlled way of doing that. So the need is great, you're right. Could we become overwhelmed? We are overwhelmed in our clinics every day, right now, to tell you the truth. The need is great in all the communities, but this particular high school has earmarks that says, if we get in there, we can make a difference.
If I could ask, one more question, if I may. Could I ask Tom or maybe Max, the most overwhelming statistic presented by Councilwoman Patterson concerns the teen pregnancy rate, 24 percent. That's got to be devastating to that great number of girls in your school. And I'm just wondering if this clinic program will do anything towards education or towards... And I'm just wondering if this clinic program will do anything towards education or towards combating this problem?
We put that so well.
Short answer is yes. I want to, it's with some hesitancy that I correct my King County Council member. But the rate is not 24%. It's 24.4 births per thousand to kids between the age of 15 and 17. It is still dramatically higher, but it's not one out of every four girls. But yes, I mean, a lot of the services that get provided in a school-based health center are really around helping kids make good choices. And one of the key elements of making, of lowering a statistic like this is making sure that kids are making good choices about their lives and their futures. And so, it would be absolutely one of our goals to help lower that.
Then would the school board approve the distribution of condoms?
I cannot speak for the school board on that issue. I'd have to, we'd have to talk about that. I can't speak for the school board on that issue.
And this isn't just about condoms. This is really about primary care and giving people a foundation to make good choices in their lives. As a primary care provider, we provide the full range of primary care services. And that includes education with kids about ways to avoid being pregnant.
Thank Councilmember Anderson.
I just have two questions. First of all, do you envision students from other schools in the Highline School District coming to Taiyi for this same service, even though they are not students there? And how do you turn them away?
We currently have a closed campus, and I would hesitate to begin to, I think that would be some really serious conversations with the school district and the other schools, partly because of the location. So, we have not discussed serving students from other Highline schools. We have begun talking with some of the private schools, Seattle Christian, Church of God has a school right around the corner. So, we have begun discussions with them. They access our after-school program, and they access classes. So, if they live in CTAC and they're of appropriate age, we would, we have been talking with them about having them. But it's hard for me to imagine students from Atenea or Highline or Evergreen coming on our campus for this service.
And another question for a school board member. Oh, did you want to say something?
I just want to add to that.
I'm sorry.
Our priority is Taiyi. We've seen the need there. We're going to target that. It's possible that once we're up and running and people learn about us, they're going to want to have something very similar. We'll find other ways of making that happen. I think what Councilmember Shape asked about the middle school is a really good question. You know, we try to eat an elephant one bite at a time and try to do it right in small steps first. And the priority for this project are the kids at Taiyi. So, we're not looking to have a lot of other stuff come into that. We're really looking to prioritize the kids and the healthcare needs of those kids at Taiyi High. And that's where we're going to stay.
I have a question for a school board member. Our understanding is that the Highline School District provides SRO officers to the other high schools. Is that correct? Because we are already providing that service to the schools. And I love the idea of it, I just think it's terrific. I like the fact that they're going there, it's unbelievable to me. But is that correct? Are we the only city that is contributing to that fund?
No. And I would like to have the statistical data in front of me before I said any numbers. But I do know that the cities of Burien and Des Moines and King County have also contributed to the cost of the SROs that are provided.
Well, I know King County does.
But I understand that this is an issue that we need to discuss further. I'd love to have Superintendent John Welsh and myself set up an appointment with your city manager and any council member that would like to attend to talk about this issue. But we have had contributions from the other municipalities and King County in providing for our SROs over the years. We are very grateful for all the support we've had. The SROs have made a tremendous difference in the safety of our children.
And I would like to point one thing out. I think you know from Kathy Black that we have, one and a half percent of our budget goes to human services. And we have those contracts out for two years out that we have, we are morally obligated to fulfill. And first of all, we don't have $50,000 left over. And secondly, that those dollars, regardless of where you'd like them to go, cannot be dedicated to one single, that other $30,000. We have tremendous number of seniors, and we have a mobile home park over here that you could just run rampant through with these dollars. We're going to need heating bills, help paying their heating bills, and help paying some of the other things that are going to happen because of terrible inflation they're feeling this year. So, there's only X number of dollars to go around. And to commit monies to it is one thing, but for us to commit to $50,000 is something else.
Mr. White.
I'm not so sure I have a particular question. I primarily have comments. We, as a council and as a city, do everything that we can to make life here in our city the best we can. We have our police force, we have a fire department, we have planning, we have public works. And we want to make this community as livable as possible. That's our number-one charge. However, there is a partner in this, which is our school system. I cannot attract people here because the roads are greater, because we have other amenities, if the schools are failing. And the bottom line is, is although Max has put a lot of effort into improving Taiyi, Taiyi is not the school that you would come to Seattle just to enroll your child in, that we are still a struggling community. We need, so what I need from the principal of Taiyi and from teachers at all the different schools is for them to be willing to put their neck on the chopping block, to get out there and find ways to improve performance. We're looking at the WASSL being enacted as a graduation requirement in a few years. Now, that will lower our graduating rate, that will, which means that we're going to have kids out in our community who are looking for alternate means to support themselves. And we know what that means. So, if we can, if we don't invest in our community now, we're going to be investing in our community in increased policing and other increased social services. Now, I look at my department heads, and I expect them to come forward with their best advice as to how to deal with the problem. Now, I'm looking at you, in a sense, as the head of the schools. And you're putting before me what you see as an appropriate solution, as one of the many prongs in improving scores and life for the students there. Now, if this is what you want to do, and you're willing to put your neck on the block in support of this program, I think that we should seriously, as a council, commit to joining you with that and commit to funding an appropriate amount of money for this, to make this program occur at our school. And I thank you for coming and presenting before us.
Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, this is a tremendous eye-opener. It almost makes us look like a third-world school. And I guess I knew this, but it's something you don't want to look at. You talk about the change from when you and you were students there. It's the same change in all of our neighborhoods. Our next-door neighbors are black Muslims people. They're beautiful people, we love them. We couldn't have envisioned, when my kids were going to Taiyi, that there'd be any black people in my community, you know? Wasn't going to happen. But that's the way CTAC is now, as you figure that we're rapidly approaching half, and the community will be nine what? So, we got to face challenges. And this is a, this is a super challenge. To think of a child in school sick and not being able to access the care that my children get is intolerable. Any CTAC child that needs help, needs our help, you know? It's a, I don't know where the $50,000 is going to come from. I do think that, looking down the road, with these kind of numbers and statistics, the impact of immigration and other factors on our community, there's got to be some other sources of money. I would like very, very much so to get started with this thing and fund it for that year. But a major mission in that year is going to have to be looking how we're going to sustain this thing. And that CTAC, we don't have a health department, we never had that. King County has a health department. And I would like to see maybe King County Health Professional coming and working at the school full-time as an asset to this community, to augment what we at the local level are trying to produce and come up with some other ways of funding. But for now, I would like to help augment this program and get it off the ground and don't have another kid sit there sick because he can't have, or don't come to school because he can't see a doctor.
Mr. Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Dean. Tom, I think I understood you to say that there's going to be between two and four healthcare professionals would work this clinic. Is that what I understood?
There'll be a nurse practitioner, a medical assistant, and what we call a client service representative that really helps people get other resources that they need. And then with the halftime nurse that the school provides, that'll be the staffing.
And would that be five days a week?
Yeah.
So, my question is, if you're going to have it populated with three and a half full-time equivalents, full-time people, and the school district is putting up 500 square feet and a half, that's three full-time healthcare professionals for $100,000 a year. And I would ask you, how do you do that?
Well, $100,000 isn't the total bill. We, you know, we, how we finance what we do is a really multi-layered partnership. We need everybody's help. And when we find that we get one party's help, getting another party's help becomes a little bit easier, because they say, okay, if those folks are in, we'll be in. So, we're still working through the budget, and our organization is committed to doing this, even if we need to dip into our pockets for a little bit. I mean, we can't go to the well when it's a static thing forever. But we think this is so important that we're willing to throw in as a partner too for this year.
So, if we were to take a look at the whole picture?
Yeah.
And King County proposes to contribute $50,000, and you're looking for $50,000 from the city, what's the total cost of putting together this proposal?
Well, I can answer the deficit question better than I can. Well, we're looking at a total cost. Once we figure out what we might be able to collect from sources like Medicaid and the basic health plan, because a small number of the kids will have that kind of coverage, that we're going to need about $125,000 to make it break even for the first year.
Okay, but that doesn't address the total cost. And I guess what I'm really getting at is, where do the other funding sources come from? Who are the partners in this venture?
Right now, the partners in this venture would be the city of CTAC, King County, Community Health Centers of King County, and the school district.
We've written a grant proposal to the Group Health Foundation for some support. But that support is primarily helping us to get equipment for setup and that kind of thing, not for operational dollars. For setting the clinic up, it's going to be in the neighborhood, for doing what we need to do for the space. And the equipment that we need is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $60,000 to $65,000. That's not operational cost. And then, to operate the clinic on a yearly basis, we're talking in the neighborhood of about $245,000. And that's with the funds, the funding that we think we can get through different sources, we're still at a deficit of $125,000 for operational costs.
Is it $245,000 with or without the halftime FTE from the school district?
That doesn't include the FTE from the school. And again, the school is providing to us the space, so there's no rent for the space. There would be an added cost of $35,000 to $40,000 for space if we were having to rent the space.
And I guess that's the reason for my query, is if you were to put together the total cost of this program and put together all the contributors, everybody who's in it, then we would have a better idea of what it is, rather than saying it's just going to cost $100,000 to run this program.
Okay, certainly.
Because that just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but so what we're saying is, it's going to cost us about $60,000 to set up, and it's going to cost us about $250,000 a year to run.
Plus the space, plus the halftime FTE from the school.
Correct. Which is, probably you could add another $70,000 to that. I'm just guessing.
For a halftime FTE for a school nurse and for the rent, and then the benefits and everything associated, as well as looking at what's being added to us with Colleen's time and other support staff in the school, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of, that's probably in-kind, another about $140,000. It's probably about twice the $70,000, when you really look at what's being spent.
So, our $100,000 program is 400 or more?
In total, when you look at all the in-kind and everything, I would say that is accurate.
Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, I agree. The numbers just don't seem to add up, to do what you want to do. And here again, we're not addressing the problem. The problem is poverty, to start with. We're not even talking about that. And what I'm wondering is, do you have health education programs? And you're talking about education. I'm assuming you teach health education in this school on top of this, right? And the old shot card, you couldn't get in the school if you didn't have all your immunizations. When I went to school, and that's my question, do you have, in addition to all of this, do you have a good health education program? And tell me about the shot record.
It's a school-wide requirement that every student take one semester of health. In that one semester, we cover everything from sexual education, reproductive health, health and nutrition, drugs and alcohol, healthy living choices. So, that's in a one-semester course. All of our students, they cannot come to Taiyi without proper immunizations. So, what that means is, we send them home, and they stay at home until they get immunized. So, for people in our community to get immunized, that means sometimes a bus trip to Harborview, or two bus trips, or three bus trips. So, they're not allowed in school without immunization. That's part of the problem, is if they start school in October, because it took them a month to get immunized, they lose a school year. It's that simple. If they miss the first month of school, it's really hard for them to catch up. So, they're not allowed in without immunizations.
And this will help them get those shots if they need them.
Exactly. Last year, we did a pilot program with King County Public Health, I believe it was, where we offered immunizations on campus. And it was well-attended by the community, and we got kids into school pretty quickly.
If I might, I'd like to address the point that you raised about, we're not addressing poverty. You're right, we're not addressing poverty head-on. But we are addressing health and education, which are critical roads out of poverty.
Mr. Shape, please.
All of these dollar figures flying around, the bottom line is, if you get 50 from the county and 50 from us, are you going to conduct the pilot program for all of 2006?
Absolutely. And if we get 50 from you and 50 from the county, it makes our $400,000 to $500,000 project fly real well. It's about leveraging, and it's about partnerships.
Mr. White.
And that's what I wanted to speak to. We're talking about the overall cost of your program. But I get a feeling that you all are pretty old hats at going to different organizations and different groups, both public and private, asking for funding for some pretty valuable program.
So old, I've lost my hair.
And so, for us to look at the overall financing of your project is very interesting to me. But I certainly have the feeling that we're not going to be saddled with the entire thing on our lap. What you're coming to us to ask is that we provide a portion, which is going to be leveraged by the county, dollar for dollar, to support a program that directly serves our citizens and doesn't go out to the county somewheres. So, this is a fantastic opportunity. And the difficult thing for us to also remember is that we talk about at-risk communities, and almost as though they're a liability. But what we have to remember is that back in the '70s and the earlier years, that we sometimes look back and find as far, we're a better community today than we were back then. To have the cultural diversity, the different languages, the different views on spirituality, the different... the different views on the world are all a benefit to us. So we have to recognize that that's, that we're becoming a stronger and better community, but a community that does come along with some disadvantages, which we have to work for. So once again, I wanna, although what I may be saying is not entirely popular, apparently, I think ultimately it is the truth. And I wanna put myself 100% behind you guys, and, and once again, thank you for being in front of us.
Okay, we're going way over our time, but this is a very valuable subject, and we wanna, but is there any consensus on the council as to where we ought to go from here? Mr. Ward?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to prepare a decision card for council budget discussions for 2006 on this item that we can discuss in the context of the overall city budget.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor. I think that's the appropriate thing to do, is to have further discussion on this item.
I would throw that.
I'll ask Councilmember Patterson, though, on her timeline, for the 50,000 you're gonna get out of Larry Gossit.
No pressure. I mean, the 50, let me, let me make this very clear. The budget language says that matching grant is available up to 50,000 dollars. So no pressure. I think this is a marvelous opportunity to invest directly into the young citizens of the city of C-TAC. But the, the decision is yours, and the decision that you make will be respected, completely respected. And Councilmember DeHan, you raised an excellent point. We need to show you the overall budget for the total clinic for the year, so that you can put things into perspective. And for your budget discussions, that budget will be made available to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, please.
I have just one point. We also need, from you, sir, who talked me into the Lutheran one, that what we tell the people, the citizens of C-TAC, who are wondering about what we're doing with their dollars, why these young people are not walking a block and a half to the Lutheran clinic.
I can certainly speak to that more than I've tried to speak to it tonight. We, we know this from our own experiences with other youth-targeted clinics, and from the experiences of our colleagues, and from, frankly, from research that's been done, on getting kids access and into care. Kids don't particularly care to go, particularly high school kids, where there's a bunch of adults hanging around.
They don't like to do anything an adult tells them to do.
Well, and if our goal is to keep them healthy, then we need to recognize where our market is. I mean, you can talk about this in terms of marketing. Our market has a particular market need in this regard, and we know how to reach that market. And it's their market behaviors that we're speaking to and addressing, and helping them get used to the idea of accessing needed healthcare services and living healthier lives. My prediction will be that once these kids get used to that, as younger adults out of high school, they will become much more intelligent users of the healthcare system, and much more intelligent managers of their own health, by virtue of having these experiences in the school. The reason they won't go up the street is because it's up the street. And the reason that they will come to the clinic in the school is because it's in the school, it's there for them when they need it and in the place that they need it. And they don't have to take time out of after-school activities, sports, and other things that are important for their development, to go up the street to the clinic. They can get to it right where they are. And it is, we all shop for convenience. And, and this, I think convenience is maybe making light a little bit of what we're talking about here, but it is putting the services where they're needed and where they can be accessed. And, and I'll be happy to talk to anyone about that.
Okay, I think what we better do now is, we had four people sign up that wish to address this. And so if you guys wouldn't mind just staying there, and first is Dave Bush, and Dave was, of course, an old friend from the PTA days and whatnot. Dave, would you come to the mic and tell us where you live and everything?
Washington, DC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing me to speak. I live at 3315 South 191st Street in C-TAC. And I'm also president-elect at C-TAC Rotary, I'm trustee for the Highline Schools Foundation for Excellence, I'm a trustee for the YMCA. I was PTA president from Taiyi High School for the last three and a half years. I was on site council for three years at Taiyi, and I spent approximately an hour almost every day, whenever I could, mentoring kids at Taiyi during my lunch and their lunch. And, and sometimes two hours, when we had two-hour lunches last year. I also try to do the same thing at Chinook whenever possible. One thing I've learned when I walked on campus, after being there a while, is society seems to dump all its problems on the schools. And when I say that, I mean, all you have to do is go on campus, you can take a look, and you can see the problems that are there. And what I've been trying to do, and working with Max and Colleen over the past years, is try to get a few of those things straightened out. And it's an immense task, it really is. They've made tremendous strides. I can't even tell you enough. On this subject, we wanted to get some grassroots support. Last Wednesday, we had the Rotary Club of C-TAC sponsor a luncheon at the Tukwila Pantry. We invited many of the pastors in the area to come. We had 11 at that particular meeting. Some of the others couldn't make it, but they did have a meeting that's gonna, I think, one of the pastors is here this evening, he's gonna expound on that. Then the very next day, they had another meeting. And this group or some of their friends spoke at that, that meeting. The pastors now, they're supporting us, and they are working on a funding package to help support this whole program. I'd like to point out that that's approximately just 11 different churches, and just those, not to mention the others I think that are gonna be on board. That's approximately 11,000 citizens of C-TAC or the area that are on board on this, that'll be helping us. And I think that says a lot, and I think that's grassroots. I also like to point out that a lot of these students at Taiyi are particular, are the ones that are working in your neighborhood taco time, Jack-in-the-Box, down at South Center, or all the different stores down there, and the places where you eat. A lot of their parents and themselves work at Denny's, washing dishes, handling the dishes and the, and the silverware and glasses that we all eat and drink out when we go to those places. And I think it's highly appropriate that we make sure that they're, that we're safe by keeping them safer. And having, having this medical clinic is gonna help do that. Also, just pointing out, Mar Vista in Normandy Park is one of the best grade schools around. I don't think there's any question, it's one of the top grade schools in all of King County. And that, that particular school, the property values over in Normandy Park have soared just because of Mar Vista. When people move in to Normandy Park, they move there because of Mar Vista. And I know that, because when I'm not doing all the other things I, I mentioned, I have a part-time job working at Windermere that is actually full-time, I'm the assistant manager there, and I sell real estate for a living. And I, and with that, I would like to finish by saying, if we have a better school, property values go up. And Mar Vista's proved it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dave. We always value your opinion. Now, the next gentleman that signed up is Mauricio Ayon?
Mauricio.
Mauricio, I'll get it here one of these days.
Thank you. My name is Mauricio Ayon, and I live at 3727 South 164th. And I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been a community organizer for about 12 years, and three years ago, the Ayon family decided to make C-TAC our home. And with that, we have done a lot of work in the community, especially in the schools of Bow Lake, Madrona, Chinook, and, and now Taiyi that we're talking about. And I just wanted to bring up to you the fact that our communities, especially our low-income communities, need support beyond to what the schools can provide, or what we are providing in the schools. And, and the health clinic is one of those supports that our teens will greatly benefit from. I have come before you previously to bring up community issues, 'cause I, I spend a lot of time in the, in the apartment buildings, talking to folks. And I can tell you firsthand that I've seen the issues that families face, especially folks that have to get two jobs and sometimes three jobs in order to make it. So Councilmember Fisher said earlier that we're not addressing the issue of poverty, and, and we're not. However, we're, we're tackling one of the issues on, on, on basic human needs, which is access to health. I wanna thank you for the opportunity, and congratulate you, to the folks here in the, in the group for the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I'll call next on Gary Vanderhoff, wish to comment on this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Pastor Gary Vanderhoff of Neighborhood Life Center. We were the church at the Lewis and Clark Theater. Now we're meeting in Des Moines. So you know I was in Tukwila, now in Des Moines. I used to be a resident of C-TAC for several years. My kids attended Chinook and Taiyi. And now I live in Auburn, 2964055th Place South. So I feel real good having King County representative here, 'cause I feel like one of them. But I say all that to say, I, I don't come to represent the entire faith community here. I'll speak for myself, but I have colleagues, such as Redmore, pastor of the Church of God in C-TAC. We did get together, we met with representatives from this team and talked about the need. And I can speak, tonight I wanna just speak to you as a pastor and as a father, because I was one of those C-TAC residents who was in that really awkward position of making too much money to get any kind of state support for healthcare, but not enough money to afford healthcare for my children. And I could tell you, I don't have the time, but I could tell you the horror stories of what it was like for me. The people that I do represent in my congregation, obviously they come from several of the communities around, and C-TAC is one of those communities that are dear to our hearts as pastors. And there are some issues with healthcare. You know, you speak of reproductive issues, and that, you know, obviously we'll touch on things with pastors and churches. But when we look at the overall need of the students and the primary care for their health, to make sure that they can go to school, I speak very much in favor of you considering this. I'm thankful that I hear that you are willing to consider that. The pastors, although we have not made a clear decision yet, did meet the day after we met with this team, and spent a great deal of time talking about what we could do. We are having each church make a decision of how much they will support. Pastors meet every month together, in Tukwila primarily, and some of the C-TAC pastors, to decide what we will be able to do. And we will give a number, a figure of support. Even with the issues that, that stretch us, we can see beyond that and see this is a worthy cause. The kids need help. And it's also stretched our imagination a little bit, too, to help us see what other ways we can, can help the health issues of the city. But we'll start with what we can do, which is financial help. So we're going to do our part. We don't know what capacity yet, but we are one of those other fund sources. It is a partnership, and I communicated to Colleen an email a couple days ago, that my hope is, our hope is, that when we do give the dollar amount, they will be able to leverage that amount to encourage other people to hop on as well. It is a community effort. So I'm hoping that you council members and Mayor will decide to be a part of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Our other person signed up is Joe Dixon. So Joe, would you, Joe's been through this exercise many times.
My name is Joseph Dixon, and I live at 1921135th Avenue South. I almost hesitate to bring up another subject after the last hour-plus that we've had on this very important thing, and brought for, brought forth with people highly in the know and very persuasive. But I do have a problem, though, with one of the consent agenda ones that you will be considering shortly, I think shortly, it's almost my bedtime. And it has to do with Agenda Bill 2598, which quickly reads, "A resolution expressing council opposition to Initiative 912, which concerns motor vehicle fuel taxes and encouraging voter rejection at the November 8 general election." I have no problem with you people as a council of expressing your opposition, and certainly I know why. But I do have a problem with you when it comes to encouraging voter rejection. First of all, I'm not sure how you're gonna do that. Are you gonna get on the phone and call up and encourage people to reject it? It's kind of a personal affront to me, even though I, no doubt, will vote against repealing the gas tax. But I feel that we, the public, voters, taxpayers, have a right to make up our own mind without influence, being influenced by people that are in a privileged and elective position. And I would hope that one of you council members would take this agenda bill off the consent agenda and put it on new, new business, and at least consider scratching, deleting the portion of the resolution that says encourage, and encouraging voice reject, voter rejection, just those three, three words there. And I guess that's all I have to say. I think we ought to be free from, at least from our elective, elective representatives to make up our own mind as to how we ought to vote on initiatives that are legally gonna be put on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay, and now we, at long last, come to the consent agenda. And would the clerk please read the consent agenda? And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
You'll be hearing from us and working with our staff and... There goes our whole audience. There you go. Clean them out.
Our popularity sure went down the toilet.
Should I go ahead?
Go ahead, please.
Approving claim vouchers in the amount of $370,666.34 for the period ending October 5th. Approval of payroll vouchers in the amount of $296,780.85 for the period ended September 30th. Approval of payroll electronic fund transfers in the amount of $278,740.65 for the period ended September 30th. Approval of payroll wire transfers in the amount of $55,448.67 for the period ended September 30th. Approval of summary of $5,000 to $25,000 purchase requests for the period ended October 7th. Approval of council meeting minutes of the Budget Workshop 1 held September 13th, Budget Workshop 2 held September 20th, Transportation and Public Works Committee meeting held September 27th, and the regular council meeting held September 27th. Acceptance of Advisory Committee meeting minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held- procedures providing for telephone participation and voting by absent council members. Agenda Bill 2568, an ordinance increasing the monthly contribution to the city's Viva Expense Fund. Agenda Bill 2591, a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year extension of the international, excuse me, inter-local agreement among participating jurisdictions within the Green/Dwamish and Central Puget Sound Watershed Resource Inventory Area, known as WIRA 7.
Nine.
Oh, seven, nine. Agenda Bill 2592, a resolution ratifying the Green/Dwamish and Central Puget Sound Watershed Resource Inventory Area Salmon Habitat Plan, making our watershed fit for a king, dated August 2005. Agenda Bill 2598, a resolution expressing counsel opposition to initiative 912, which concerns motor vehicle fuel taxes and encouraging voter rejection at the November 8, 2005, general election. Agenda Bill 2596, a motion surpassing old fire hose to the U.S. Fire Administration for Distribution to Fire Departments in Areas Damaged by Hurricanes Katrina and Rita.
Chair, entertain a motion for the consent.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Agenda Bill 12. What is it, something 98, 20, something? Anyway, the one that Joe just talked about.
That's Agenda Bill 2598.
Send it to new business.
According to council rules, that request is granted. So I'll still entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Who moved?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So now we come to new business, and--
Mr. Mayor--
We'll take 2598 first.
I'd like to move that we amend Agenda Bill 2598, as Mr. Dixon suggested. I thought when I spoke, I said I shouldn't be voting for, I just didn't read it properly. I apologize for that, but I do think that should be eliminated, and those three words should be eliminated. Other than that, it's fine.
Is there any other--
Read it into the record.
--council comment? Did you propose that as an amendment?
Yes, I did.
It needs a second. And let me state for the record, and I think the words that Councilmember Anderson is asking be deleted are the words that say "and encourages rejection by the voters."
Including voter rejection.
Correct.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor of the amendment? Discussion, thank you.
I'd like to speak against that amendment. As a private citizen, I would like to reserve my rights to encourage voters to vote any way I want to. And if I want to encourage people to vote against it, as a private citizen, I think I have the right to say that.
Why, do you, too? But I don't--
And as a council, I think that we can come to a consensus by passing this resolution that the members of the council feel the same way. And if anybody on the council wants to speak against that to their neighbors, they should have that right to do so.
Any other? Mr. Fisher, did you wish to comment?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this myself, but I'm with Joe, I believe, although I don't feel that privileged after being here for like 10, a little over 10 hours today, three or four bucks an hour. But I don't think that the public pays that much attention to us. I'm sorry, Joe. I don't think we're that far out--
Not quite that privileged.
Not quite that privileged. But I've had a problem with this emergency 3 cents. It wasn't no emergency in the first place, but I think that's where most of the opposition is coming from, that put this up in the first place, is people were mad that that went in at the 3% on an emergency. But I'll go along with it, having said my piece, I guess, because I don't think we're quite that privileged.
Okay, now if I got the procedure right here, we're voting on Councilmember Anderson's amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I'll say no.
Roll call, please.
And this is just on the amendment?
This is on the amendment. Okay, roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 No.
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 Aye.
We have three noes and four ayes.
That's a good--
Okay, the amendment has passed. The three words encouraging voter rejection will be deleted. We will now vote on the Agenda Bill 2598 as amended.
Before you do, a point of clarification. I take it that that's to be deleted from the title as well as the resolve portion of the ordinance, a resolution, excuse me.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of 2598?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 2598 as amended, passed. We will now go to Agenda Bill 2579.
What?
The motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Port of Seattle. We have a--
I still move.
So moved? We have-- I'll second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, Frank.
Mr. White.
I will keep my comments brief, because it's getting pretty late here. There's a portion in here in the ILA that says, "The parties recognized the adoption of the comprehensive planning zoning designations by the city are discretionary actions." Now, I think that's an important statement, and I think that that's backed up by law, in my opinion, although I certainly don't want to open that up to a wide discussion. However, later on in Section 2.3.2.1, the city says that the city shall amend the comprehensive plan and zoning map according to the port wishes. Now, I see those two elements in direct contradiction, and that has been a consistent argument that I've made, is that it is up to us as a council to determine in what fashion zoning and comprehensive plan changes are made. The other portion, briefly, I have concern is, is it's ordinarily been the case when a developer uses a piece of property which brings heavy use upon the streets, requiring expansions or additional lights, that it's ordinary that that developer pay the cost for the street improvements that are necessary. Many of the objects that are being brought onto our TIP are port developments, such as roads across 518 to serve the rental car facility, or expansions around the L-shaped Ring Road, which are now landing on our TIP. Those projects represent the majority of the $30 million that the port, of projects the port is asking to be placed on our budget. In order to fund that, we also have shifted the taxing, the transaction fee, in essence, to remove an economic burden on the port and place it squarely on the shoulders of our local businesses. Now, whether I'm to argue whether that's wise or unwise, I could certainly argue that a quid pro quo in that negotiation would suggest that the city should have received substantial benefits in other areas. And I don't necessarily see us as having received those. So that is why I have chosen to vote no in this contract.
Question.
The question's been called for. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Hey, is this your first time?
Happens to me a lot.
Okay, I believe that terminates our business, and we will now go to the city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items, and I do want to express the appreciation of myself and staff for your kind comments this evening, particularly regarding the interlocal agreement negotiations. Tomorrow night, Taiyi High School Academy of Citizenship and Empowerment will hold an open house at 6 o'clock, and so the council and the public are certainly encouraged to attend. Also, tomorrow night, at 6:15, the King County Transportation Committee, a committee of the King County Council, will be having a discussion on the proposed relocation of Southwest Airlines service to King County International Airport or Boeing Field. I think most of you know, and I haven't had the opportunity tonight of watching the news, so I assume this was news tonight that others may be aware of, but I was notified this morning by staff of King County Executive Sims that the King County, that he apparently will not be moving forward based with the proposals from Southwest Airlines and associated proposals of other airlines, who said they, too, would have to accompany Southwest Airlines. And so it appears that this issue of Southwest Airlines moving to King County International Field is now at least dead for the time being. It seems like nothing ever really ends--
Nothing dies. It's just kind of lazy.
It will, yes. So at least it'll slip beneath the surface for a while, and no doubt come about at some point in the future. But that is good news, and I suspect the attendance tomorrow night at the King County Council meeting will be seriously degraded as a result of this announcement today, but I would certainly hope so. Finally, I do want to make you aware that several staff, seven staff of the city, including myself and our chief of police, among others, will be attending a training session with FEMA in late, on October 28 to November 5 in Emmitsburg, Maryland. They will be, the Homeland Security Department will be picking up our expenses for travel, except for some meal expenses en route, and so we'll be going back. This is specifically to help us understand the issues of earthquake emergency response. And I think it'll greatly serve our overall emergency planning efforts to have senior staff of the city focus on this. So we appreciate the opportunity, and I'm just notifying you now. Yes, ma'am?
What do you mean meal? How are you going to get there? By horse and buggy? What do you mean meal expenses and route?
No, what FEMA does is they pick up, they pick up the airfare of the people who are approved to attend this, as all seven of us have been, and then they put us up, they essentially room and board for the week that we're there at this training session. But en route, they don't pick up the meal costs of people. So if you catch a 6 o'clock flight, you're going to have probably something to eat along the way, and the city will have to pick up those travel expenses just for the day flying there and the day flying back. Those are the only expenses we would incur. And that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Fisher?
No comment.
Mr. White?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce some news, that my wife and I are probably going to become adoptive parents for a new baby, and it's been pretty exciting for us. It's come on us rather quick. The baby's had a difficult start to her life and has decided to take it all out on us from here on out. So we have not fully come up with a name, so we are taking requests, and for $20, we'll name her out. I thought we could put it on eBay. But that's probably all my comments, other than it is a difficult process getting a baby adopted. And I've tried to get as much mileage out of being a council member as I could. However, nobody would believe that I was a council member. So I have told them that I'm the secretary of war for the city of CTAC, and I do expect that whoever answers the phone here backs me up on that.
We can hardly believe you're a council member.
That's all my comments.
Councilmember Anders.
Just one thing. We had a meeting here on Sunday, the Historical Society did, and we had a gentleman come in from Olympia who was, I don't know how many, what kind of degrees they get, but anyhow, they've got lots of letters after them on the subject of Lewis and Clark. And it was fascinating. We had, oh, maybe 75, 85, I think there were 92, actually, people here. And it went off very well. I want to express our appreciation for the loan of the building. We will be using it again on the 23rd, but it was a wonderful event, and I encourage you to come to some of those that there's, I know more things about Mr. Lewis and Mr. Clark than I do about my own family, some of which was, I wouldn't even repeat to my family. But anyway, it was a very, very wonderful experience, and I would encourage you to, next time we have one, to come and see it. The cases will be filled with memorabilia soon. And also, you will find in there, we will be putting, I think, if we can document it, some baskets, and there will be five baskets, and the value of them is $30,000. So I have questioned whether or not we want to take that liability on in our building. So anyway, but thank you very much for all of you, and Craig and all the staff, for the work you did to get this place ready for this event.
Mr. Shay.
Well, let me just say that irregardless of council action tonight, I still intend to encourage voter rejection of Initiative 912. And at the A&amp;F Committee today, the Position Vacancy Review Board recommended that we hire two people, and I'm required to notify the council that we did approve that. One position is for a fire inspector, and the other position for a GIS coordinator. Both of those positions became vacant due to resignations.
Mr. Brennan.
Is there, will be a meeting of the Hotel Motel Tax Committee meeting at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, and you're all invited. It'll be fun.
Mr. De--
Can I tell a joke?
No, no. Let's move on.
In the interest of hastening our departure, I'll just say I pass, Mr. Mayor. And I would move that we adjourn.
I'll put up a comment.
After your comments.
Brief comment. I second that.
The only thing, and I'm absolutely delighted we passed the ILA, it's been a long, arduous task for the staff, and we made, we had a great document that's done wonderful things for our citizens, and it's even better now. One thing I would suggest is, we passed it tonight, the port will pass it, as I understand it, in two weeks, and rather than waiting two more months till the first of the year, I think it should, if you can run the effective date of it up, because it means $300,000 a month to us. So that means we're leaving $600,000 that AL hates to park with money back there, but it's all for roadwork. And so if there's any chance the port would sign it sooner and activate the program sooner, it would be in the interests of the city of CTAC.
Does this take 30 days to make law?
I don't know. Does it take 30 days, Mary?
Well, this is a motion. This is going to pass immediately, but it authorizes the city manager--
Yeah, that's right.
--to execute it. So the ILA itself does not become effective until executed by both parties, whatever date that is.
If you can get it any sooner, why we get more money--
Well, it won't be before today.
I'll be happy to try to negotiate a faster start on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Mark should be happy now. He should be able to get his signature on anything.
Okay, and no further business. Before I heard a motion to adjourn--
And a second.
Boy, everybody's for it, I'll bet.
Long day.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Pardon. Rob, you could still-- 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 Rob, you could still--